Good evening, everyone. If you could try to begin to take your seats and to try to get quiet. What we're going to do is that we're going to try to get started. We know that this is a phenomenal crowd and we're going to try to accommodate everybody that would like to speak. So the folks that are still signing in, we're going to continue to accept anybody that is signing in, but we're going to try to do it quietly and respectfully as we're moving in. So thank you first to the city of Scottsdale for these wonderful accommodations. My name is Rick Sturz. I'm one of the commissioners of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. And I would like to say on behalf of my other commissioners who are watching and streaming good evening, that you are missing the largest crowd that we've had so far in our tour around the state of Arizona. So Scottsdale, give yourself a hand. I'd also like to introduce, up, pardon me, Marty. Marty reminded me that the time is 6:20. We are starting the meeting at 6:20. I'd like to introduce some of the folks that we have with us. To my left, we have our legal counsel, Joe Canefield; our deputy executive director, Christina Gomez; our public relations coordinators, and they are working at the tables out there, Lisa Schmeling and Kristi Olson; our chief technology officer, Buck Forrest, who is behind the box, and he is managing the speakers and the streaming. And he'll also assist as you're coming up and giving testimony if you need any help with the microphone for people that need it to be raised, lowered, or moved. To my right, we have Andrew Dressler, a fellow Packer fan with Strategic Telemetry. Our court reporter is Marty Herter, who has been traveling the state with us. Our interpreter tonight is Carlos Reyes. And I want to give a special thanks to the organizer from the city of Scottsdale, Brad Lundall. So we'd like to give special thanks to Brad as well. Before we get, thank you. Before we get started, I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. We do have a few housekeeping items that we need to take care of. The first is that we have our interpreter, Carlos Reyes, who I would like to have come up to the microphone, giving the opportunity that if we have anyone that needs assistance in language and interpretation, he can make that announcement. So, Mr. Reyes.
Good evening, Commissioner Sturz. Ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with the Voting Rights Act, an interpreter will be available at all the public hearings. In order to provide interpreting services that might be needed for those citizens that need interpreting services, please contact the interpreter present at this meeting so that he or she can assist you. And I will read that same script in Spanish. Comisionado Hertz, damas y caballeros, de acuerdo a la ley de los derechos electorales, un intérprete estará disponible en todas las reuniones de audiencia pública, a fin de proporcionar la traducción o interpretación que pueda ser necesaria para los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de interpretación. Por favor, contacte al intérprete presente en la audiencia para que él le asista. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. When you entered the hall this evening, you should have received a packet that looks like this, and you should have had the opportunity to also have a yellow sheet. Now, the yellow sheet is a speaker sheet, so if you wish to speak tonight, please fill one out and turn in the speaker sheet to one of the staff members, and I will include it in the pack. We've got about eighty different speakers that would like to speak so far. In the back of this packet is a blue sheet. On this blue sheet is if you do not wish to speak, but you would like to have your comments entered into the record. Because the importance of these tours that we are doing through the twenty-seven locations around the state is to collect information and data. So if you don't feel comfortable about what you are, don't feel comfortable about getting in front of a microphone or speaking in public, please put your comments on this blue sheet. You've made it here tonight, and you've taken out of your time and your day to do this. They are in the back of the packet, and if you do not have it, or if you came in, the entrance sign-in desk is right outside these doors. So, right outside these doors, you can either get a yellow sheet or a blue sheet. Yellow is for speakers, and the blue sheets if you do not wish to speak, but you wish to have your comments put on the record. Okay, before we begin testimony, we're going to, I'm going to introduce Andrew Dressler. He is the mapping consultant with Strategic Telemetry, and he will give you an overview of the Independent Redistricting Commission and the process that has been taking place so far today. Andrew.
Thank you very much. Before we get started tonight, we just, as Commissioner Sturz said, want to do a quick overview of the process that, which got us to this date, and we're going to display the draft maps tonight. And one of the big things that we're here for is to hear your comments. We want to hear what you like about the maps, what you might not like about the maps, what changes you'd make to the maps. So we're here to hear your comments, and there's a number of different ways to do that. Before we start, just want to quick do an overview of why we're here. Arizona's redistricting process is governed by the state constitution, as amended by voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that Arizona's Independent Redistricting Commission redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the results of the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat. So we're going to be going from eight seats to nine seats. And for the legislative seats, we're still going to remain at thirty senate seats, and nested within them are going to be two, within each of the thirty senate seats is going to be two House of Representatives seats, so there will be sixty. But of course, with the population changes, that's why we're changing the lines. So what are the requirements of state constitution via Proposition 106? There's sort of six main guidelines that the commission has, sort of their rulebook of what they need to follow. New district boundaries must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. And B, equal population. So those two are federally mandated, and all the states have to do those two. The next four are parts of the Proposition 106 that were passed. And to the extent practical, the districts must be compact and contiguous. Respect communities of interest. E, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. F, favor competitive districts where no significant detriment to other goals. We just wanted to quick highlight the Voting Rights Act, and I have a quick video to show after this. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means they can have no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. Quick pause and play a video by Bruce Adelson.
Hello, my name is Bruce Adelson. I wanted to spend a few moments with you to talk a little bit about redistricting. I was a senior attorney for the United States Department of Justice in 2002, when the department and my team objected to or blocked your legislative redistricting plan. It's very important to understand that under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which is a federal law, Arizona must obtain approval or preclearance from the Department of Justice or from a federal court in Washington, D.C., for your redistricting plan to go into effect. Under Section 5, under federal law, your redistricting plan cannot discriminate against the rights of minority voters. It cannot retrogress their opportunity to elect whom they want. This is a federal requirement. The federal requirement supersedes and takes precedence over all state requirements, whether they're competitiveness, compactness, contiguity, or keeping communities of interest together. Those are all very important. But if they conflict with the Voting Rights Act and conflict with the one-person, one-vote requirement of the U.S. Constitution, then they must be revised. The requirements of the Voting Rights Act and one-person, one vote are paramount. There cannot be any retrogression, discrimination against the rights of minority voters. If there is, the Department of Justice will not approve the redistricting plan. That's what we said when we wrote our letter in May 2002, and we objected to what the redistricting commission nine years ago had done. We found that the redistricting plan, the legislative plan, had discriminated against the rights of minority voters. And under federal law, that plan could not go into effect. So that as you contemplate redistricting and look at the various maps that have been provided by the commission, it's very important to understand that the federal requirements under our system of law and government take priority. Those requirements cannot be minimized and must be complied with for your redistricting plan to go into effect next year to enable you to have your legislative and congressional elections. I hope that my perspective as being a former federal law enforcement officer has been helpful, and I wish you continued success with your redistricting process. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bruce Adelson. I wanted to spend a few moments with you to talk a little bit. Okay, just want to do a quick review of the timeline that we're dealing with, with the redistricting process. The first step was setting up the commission. Earlier this year, the commissioners were selected through a process, a thorough screening process, and all five commissioners serve as a voluntary, in a voluntary role onto the commission. Step two was the first round of hearings. Before a single line was drawn, the commission met twenty-three, had twenty-three public hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public regarding issues relevant to redistricting, such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. The third step was the mapping. Per Proposition 106, they require us to start with a blank slate. From there, we then divide the state into equal population and compact grid-like districts, which was, which is the grid map, which was approved on August 18. Since adopting the grid maps, the commission has met more than twenty-five times to consider adjustments to the grid to accommodate all six constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional public comments and other draft maps. Approval of the draft maps. On October 3, the commission approved a draft congressional map that incorporated all the changes based on the constitutional criteria. It approved a draft legislative map on October 10. The second round of hearings, which you're part of tonight. We're currently visiting over twenty-five towns and cities around the state to hear input and see what your thoughts are on the maps during the months of October and November. Step five is the final maps. Upon completion of the public comment period, the AIRC will adopt the final maps. And the final step is preclearance. Because Arizona is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the district maps must be approved by the federal Department of Justice or a federal court in Washington, D.C., before they can be used in Arizona elections. Before we show you the draft congressional map, just want to show you the current map. This was the map that was used by the last commission, or drafted by the last commission, and most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, we need to start with a blank slate, and then we create the grid map. The grid map takes in only two of the six criteria. It takes in equal population and compactness. And finally, we, after all the meetings and the public hearings, getting comments, and the twenty-five meetings at the end of August and into September and October, we came up with a congressional draft map. Some highlights of the congressional draft map is they have two predominantly rural districts, three border districts, three districts in greater Tucson region, five districts that are entirely in Maricopa County, avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations, two districts where minority voters have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The legislative map followed a very similar process. To start, just for a starting point for tonight, this is the legislative map that the last commission approved and was most recently used in the 2010 elections. And just like the congressional map, we needed to start with a blank slate, and then we created the grid map. Again, the grid map only took into consideration two of the six criteria. Again, it taken, took into consideration equal population and compactness. Once, once the grid maps were established in end of August, then they came up with the legislative map again. That's when they took in the other four constitutional criteria. And this is the draft map that we're currently proposing. The draft map includes, some highlights of the draft map, the old districts, the population of the old districts ranged from one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand to three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand. Under this current draft map, they are roughly two-hundred-and-seven-thousand to two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft map includes ten districts, which, in which minority voters have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The draft includes three districts wholly within Pima County, and three additional southern Arizona districts, seventeen districts primarily within Maricopa County, and nine districts primarily rural. And of course, one of the main reasons that we're here tonight is because we want to hear your input on the draft maps. There's a number of different ways that we, you can give us your input. You can fill out one of the request-to-speak forms, the yellow forms, if you want to speak here tonight, and some examples of what you may want to tell us. You may talk about some of the constitutional criteria, what you like about the draft congressional map, what you don't like about the draft congressional map, and same thing with the legislative map. So you can either give us your comments by speaking at the hearing. As Commissioner Sturz, there's a blue sheet at the back of your packets. You can either hand those in tonight. We have the address, the commission's address, if you want to mail these in. We have that at the bottom. If you want to call us and give us your comments, you can do that as well. You can also visit us at our website, www.aizeredistricting.org, and there's the opportunity to fill out public, submit public input there. Or you can call us either at the number 602-542-5221, or toll-free 855-733-7478. This is just a screenshot of our website, and it's one of the, we just wanted to highlight a couple things for the public. You can, there's, up in the left-hand corner, you'll find a link to the, all the maps. If you want to see the grid maps a little bit closer, if you want to see some of the work, the what-if maps that were developed along the way, you can see those under the maps. Also, under the mapping section is the ability to draw your own maps. We have an online mapping software where you can go in and draw those. There's a meeting link. As we only have a couple more days of the second round of hearings, if you wanted to go review any of the past meetings, or if you wanted to see how the draft maps came in, were developed, watching any of the commissioners' meetings that happened between the end of August and throughout September and into October, you can watch the development of the maps. The public input is there as well. And down at the bottom is a, is a quick link to the draft maps as well. If you click on either, either of those, the draft congressional or legislative maps, you'll come to a page like this that has a number of different maps in different formats. There's a number of different reports on different population tables. There's compactness and competitive tables on there as well. And one of the things we have highlighted is the Google Maps. We've heard a lot of great comments of citizens liking the Google Maps, because you can click on either of those links, and it will take you to a page that looks like this. And what this does, one of the really nice features about the Google Maps is it allows you to zoom in and really see the, your districts, and see what the exact boundaries are of either the congressional or the draft maps. And this is just an example of a zoomed-in shot on Maricopa County. Finally, we want you to stay connected through our website, where, again, I mentioned you can draw maps, you can watch current or past meetings, and get updates on future meetings. You can follow us on Twitter or friend us on Facebook. Thank you very much. I will be here for, until after the meeting. If there's any questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to answer them, and we look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. The good news is, is that we're going to wrap this up at nine o'clock. That's because that's how long we have in this hall. The bad news is that I've got currently eighty-eight comment sheets, which means when we do the math, that we've got two and a half hours slightly between now and nine o'clock, that we're going to have to do the best we can to keep our comments appropriate. We know that this has been an emotionally charged week, folks. We're all aware of that. So I want everybody to do the best that they can to try to get the specific reason about what they want to speak about on the record tonight as efficiently as possible. So we are going to set a timer at two minutes, because at two minutes, that's still, I know that that doesn't give much time, but we'll also have the blue sheets available, so if you're not able to put it on testimony verbally, then we're going to have to try to take the testimony on the blue sheets. Tomorrow night, we're going to be at the Tahoma Autumn, tomorrow afternoon, we're going to be at Tahoma Autumn Legislative Chambers. Tomorrow night in Morana, and Saturday at the Desert Hills Social Center in Green Valley, and then Saturday afternoon in Casa Grande. So if there's an opportunity that's closer to the city of Scottsdale, it'd be Casa Grande, which is at 3:30 in the afternoon on Saturday, November 5. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and begin, begin public comment, and we're going to start with City of Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane. I'm also going to be doing a couple of things, is that what I'd like to do, is that I've set these two chairs up, because the two subsequent, come on, go ahead, Mayor. I'm going to call out the next two speakers, so that I've set these two chairs conveniently so that you can just go ahead and sit down and quickly pop up. So there's two speakers after Mayor Lane are Gail Barney and Robin Benning. So, Mr. Mayor, would you spell your, and also, would you please spell your names for the record?
Good evening. Thanks. My name is Jim Lane. That's J-I-M-L-A-N-E, the mayor of Scottsdale. I just want to say very plainly, thanks very much for coming. You can see that the invitation to have you here is, was well-designed, and we've got a great crowd, and I understand maybe even a record crowd, so the citizens of Scottsdale and the surrounding area are certainly very, very interested in participating, so I'm glad that you're here. I'd also wanted to make particular note that in addition to having the folks from the surrounding area, we do have President Enos from the Salt River, Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community here with us as well, so she'll be speaking to you later as well. And I, for the record, because I don't have any comments tonight, I want to just thank you for my previous two visits and my conversations on the subject. I do appreciate some of the changes that were made to accommodate my concerns on the area, as I see it in the map. So thank you very much, and welcome to Scottsdale.
Thank you, Mary Lane. Gail Barney will be followed by Robin Benning and Diane Enos then will be coming up to speak.
Thank you. I'm Gail Barney, mayor of Queen Creek, and you spell my name, G-A-I-L-B-A-R-N-E-Y. And I'm here tonight with one of my fellow council members, Robin Benning, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to share Queen Creek's town council's thoughts on the congressional maps. We understand it's been a challenging week, and as you can see, there's a lot of people here this evening, as you've already stated, so I'll be very, very brief. Queen Creek is a small town of about twenty-six square miles and twenty-seven thousand people, and we feel it's imperative that Queen Creek be in one legislative district and one congressional district. And right now, we are split down county lines. Some of our residents do live in Penal County, and the congressional and legislative districts are being split down the county line, and we feel that it divides our community, and we want to be whole as one community. And so as a council, we can't support our division. We've sent, I've sent some letters explaining this to the commission, and we have attended a couple of other meetings and presented maps to show this. So respectfully, as it is written now, we'd like to be in Congressional District 5 and Legislative District 12. And again, I thank you for your efforts. I know it's not easy.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Next speaking is City Councilmember Robin Benning, town of Queen Creek. Following Diana Enos, Diane Enos is Jewel Whitman.
Good evening, honorable members of the Independent Redistricting Commission. For the record, my name is Robin Benning, R-O-B-I-N-B-E-N-N-I-N-G. I am a council member representing the town of Queen Creek. I'll try to be very brief, because as you already know, I'm following right behind our mayor. As the mayor stated, we appreciate the opportunity to present the town's perspective on redistricting maps, and we hope that our attendance at multiple public hearings emphasizes how important it is to the town of Queen Creek that the final redistricting maps keep the town of Queen Creek in one congressional and one legislative district, which reflect, I'm sorry, reflect our desire to be within the urban Arizona and Maricopa County cohort. As explained in multiple letters to the commission, as well as in previous statements at public hearings, it is extremely important for our town that we are kept with the urban Maricopa County population cohort. The town of Queen Creek respectfully requests that the commission amend the draft maps to place the entire town within Congressional District 5 and within Legislative District 12, including that portion of the town's incorporated areas which lie within Penal County. The portions of our population that reside in Penal County do not wish to be separated into a predominantly rural and non-Maricopa district. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I apologize for taking so much time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next to speak is President Diane Enos of the Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. Following Diane will be Jewel Whitman and Scott Butler.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. It's a pleasure to be here to provide a few comments on behalf of the Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. While we are well aware of the challenges that the commission has been confronted with during this redistricting process, I am hopeful that our recommendations will be heard and given your full consideration. Briefly, by way of background, as a community composed of the Otham and Pepeish people, we have thrived in this region for thousands of years. As a result, we have independently and collaboratively developed a well-established history in the state of Arizona and the Phoenix metropolitan area. Yet culturally and politically, we are a distinct community of interest. Importantly, our circumstance is unique from other mostly rural Indian tribes throughout the state, in that we are active participants with our regional and municipal neighbors in areas including but not limited to transportation, resource allocation, infrastructure, health care, education, and economic development. It is from this perspective that I share our views with the commission. With regard to the draft congressional map, we recommend, we commend the work of the commission to construct a draft congressional map that balances the requirements of the Voting Rights Act and the concerns of many interested stakeholders throughout the state. In this context, we have three recommendations for the commission to consider. First, generally speaking, we do not believe it is in our best interest to be included in any large, mostly rural district, such as District 1, as defined in the draft map. Importantly, our community is a part of the Phoenix metropolitan area, and we share boundaries with several of the largest cities in the state of Arizona. So I would ask the commission to keep this in mind in any future alignments. Additionally, we have formed intergovernmental mutual aid and development agreements, and our children attend nearby school districts. Consequently, we have become active partners with our city and municipal neighbors. Transportation projects, inter-community cooperation, infrastructure, and economic development are just a few examples. Is that my signal?
It is, but we've already made arrangements, folks, that she's reading a letter that will be entered into the record, so if you could do your best you could to-
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up, and your entire context of your, of your comments will be entered into the record.
Sure. Second, and specifically, we request the commission to consider amending the current congressional map to include the town of Fountain Hills in District 6. For the same reasons, Fountain Hills is an urban partner with both Fort McDowell and our community. We believe there's a strong community of interest and strong economic ties among the three governing bodies within the region to more than justify inclusion into District 6. Number three, given the strong community ties I just mentioned, we strongly urge the commission to keep the city of Scottsdale in the same congressional district- commission to keep the City of Scottsdale in the same congressional district in any future congressional alignments. With regard to the state legislative map, we request that the commission realign District Twenty-three to include the Fort McDowell community. It better mirrors the rationale I spoke of. Fort McDowell and Salt River agree that this representation will recognize each tribe's individually and collectively. Closing up, our community believes the alignments requested will be entirely consistent with the criteria and constitutional requirements. Given our unique mutual tribal and neighboring communities' interests, our recommendations fall in line with that criteria. I encourage the commission to incorporate our recommendations in future congressional and legislative alignments. I want to share with the commission a joint letter from my community, the Salt River Community, Fort McDowell, and Gila River will be provided to you in the coming days.
Thank you very much, President Enos. Next to speak is Jewel Whitman, Councilman, Gila River Indian Community, followed by Scott Butler and Carol Klopatek. I hope I'm not butchering that too badly.
Good evening.
Sure.
Commissioners, Executive Directors, Staff of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, my name is Jewel Whitman, J-U-W-E-L-W-H-I-T-M-A-N, Councilmember of the Gila River Indian Community. The Gila River Indian Community appreciates both the opportunity to address you this evening and the significant efforts you have put forth in the 2011 redistricting process. From the time that the draft maps were issued by the commission, the community has developed extensive and careful addition, attention to developing views regarding the maps. The community has also engaged in thorough discussions with the two other tribes of the metropolitan area, Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation, Salt River-Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. The Gila River Indian Community respectfully submits the following positions. The community is an urban tribe in the metropolitan Phoenix area, and should be treated as an urban tribe for the purpose of the criteria for redistricting. Congressional and legislative district maps should not include the community in any district that is mostly rural or that separates the community from its neighboring jurisdictions in metropolitan Phoenix. The community has extensive and close ties with both the West and East Valley of metropolitan Phoenix. The community suggests that in order to recognize the situation characteristics placing the community in more than one congressional and more than one legislative district, may the most appropriate method of redistricting. The community fully supports the principles and positions that are presented by the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation and the Salt River-Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. We are representatives of the community here to provide any information, and a letter from the Gila River Indian Community will be submitted as soon as is available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Scott Butler, Gila River Indian Community, followed by Carol Klopatek and State Representative John Kavanaugh.
Thank you, members of the commission. Is that better?
Yep.
I'll get it up a little bit. Thanks. Is that better? My name is Scott Butler, that's S-C-O-T-B-U-T-L-E-R. I represent the Gila River Indian Community. I'm here to elaborate just a little bit on Councilman Whitman's remarks. I should tell you that he is the Chair of Gila River's Legislative Standing Committee, which deals with all of these types of issues, and he's also the Chair of the redistricting team that the community has had in place, so he's been working on this extensively for the last several weeks. The gist of the community's position is that it is an urban tribe, and it should be treated as such. We've had significant discussions with both Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation and Salt River-Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. The three tribes, I think, agree on that, that unfortunately, in the past, we've been redistricted in various ways that are no longer consistent with the nature of the tribe, the nature of its relationships, its communities of interest, or the Voting Rights Act. What the community suggests is the following. Under the congressional draft map, the community is currently in Congressional District One. We believe that's completely inappropriate. The community is not a rural tribe, and its interests are significantly different from the other tribes that are in Congressional District One. In addition, the only part of Maricopa County that is put into Congressional District One is the Native American population that's on the western side of the Gila River Indian Community, and that's a rather odd result for a redistricting map. The community believes that it's far more appropriate for it to be placed into one of the districts that is an urban metropolitan Phoenix district. The community is willing to have the community divided for that purpose. One, because we actually have population centers on both the west side of the community and the east side of the community with quite a bit of space in between. And two, because we recognize if the commission is going to redraw the maps, it's easier to move a fewer people in one place or another than to have to try to move the entire community, which is a population of about eleven or twelve thousand people in one place. So our suggestion is that the community be placed in Congressional Districts Five and Seven on the draft map as it's redrawn. On the legislative map, the same principle, we believe the community should be included in the metropolitan Phoenix districts. On the legislative map, the community is actually contiguous to eight legislative districts, so that's a big number to have to work with. Our suggestion is that the western part of the community be in District Twenty-seven and the eastern portion in District Eighteen. We also don't have an objection if a portion of the community is left in District Eleven, which is where it is on the map, around Maricopa and Casa Grande, which is a growth area around the community. We don't have any particular suggestion for you, but there are some natural ways to look at this. One is the Maricopa-Penal County line, which runs through the community. Second is Interstate Ten, which runs essentially northwest to southeast through the community. And then, as we said, there are sort of population centers, they're not huge, but population centers within the community. So those are our suggestions. We're happy to continue to work with the commission and the staff going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Next up, Carol Klopatek, followed by State Representative John Kavanaugh and Mayor Greg Bryan.
Carol Klopatek, K-L-O-P-A-T-E-K. I'm the Government Relations Director for Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation. On behalf of the nation, I wish to read a letter that was signed by President Clinton Patia, that was recently submitted to the commission, as to the nation's recommendations on the draft congressional and legislative maps. I am provided to testimony in this format in order to be concise and clear, and not to deviate from tribal councils' decisions. The nation appreciates this opportunity. As you have just heard from both Salt River and Gila River, Fort McDowell supports their positions as well. Since time immemorial, the Yavapai people occupied much of this region, and in fact, were one of the original inhabitants. Through more modern times, the nation has established not only a well-documented legacy within the nation, within the region, but within the entire state. Although we are a sovereign nation, with distinct cultural practices and belief, we are interwoven with the fabric of this region. Our relationship and interactions with the surrounding communities are unique from other rural Indian tribes throughout the state. We have become ensconced within the greater community of interest and share common geographic boundaries. We have formed numerous and various partnerships with our neighboring cities and towns that include, but are not limited to, infrastructure development, economic and joint tourism, destination ventures, transportation, education, resource allocation, and the list goes on. Thus, it is from this perspective that we provide our views and recommendations in regard to congressional redistricting. We understand and appreciate the daunting task before the IRC to construct a draft congressional map that balances the requirements of the Voting Rights Act and the criteria set out by the US and state constitution, along with the concerns of the vested stakeholders throughout the state. We commend your efforts. You've done very well. In that vein, below, the nation provides three recommendations that uphold legal requirements the IRC must abide by when reconfiguring district boundaries. Number one, we agree wholeheartedly with the commission's recommendation that it is in the nation's best interest to be excluded from any large predominantly rural district, such as defined by District One in the recently approved congressional draft map. As such, Fort McDowell strongly contends that remain in Congressional District Six alongside of Salt River-Pima-Maricopa Indian Community and the City of Scottsdale. The nation being part of Phoenix metropolitan area and Maricopa County, share boundaries not only with Salt River-Pima-Maricopa, but with other municipalities. As working partners and communities of interest, we have jointly formed numerous IGAs, mutual aid agreements, development agreements, our children attend nearby school districts, and have formed various strategic alliances, economic alliances as well. As a result, we have become active associates with our city and municipal neighbors. Thus, from transportation projects, inter-community cooperation, infrastructure, and economic development, we are very much a vital and cohesive part of the urban regional community and economy of the metropolitan Phoenix area. We support Fountain Hills, Town of Fountain Hills requests to be included in Congressional District Six. The town is an urban partner with Fort McDowell. Moreover, Fort McDowell children attend schools in Fountain Hills. We mutually work together on federal issues such as transportation and telecommunications, and we jointly run a tourism vehicle drives or economic engines. We do believe that along the geographic integrity, including compactness and contiguousness issues, there is implicit strong community of interest and strong economic ties among our governing bodies that more than justify their merit inclusion in District Six. We strongly concur with the IRC findings that the nation be aligned in Congressional District Six. This alignment is most important due to our sovereign government and its people. Fort McDowell collaboratively partnered with the Northeast Valley entities on a number of ongoing and future strategic projects in the regions, and the alliance is vital to the nation.
Ma'am.
Consistent with our views in the congressional redistricting-
Ma'am. Can you please wrap it up?
Oh, yes.
We've got a lot of folks here.
Okay. In regard to the redistricting in Legislative District Twenty-three, Fort McDowell requests that we be actually moved from District Twenty-four into District Twenty-three. The nation proposed changes to the draft legislative map would move more than nine hundred, would move only nine hundred seventy-one people into District Twenty-four, or from District Twenty-four into District Twenty-three, of whom six hundred fourteen are voting age. This decision isn't, in regard to this decision, since there is current configuration, Legislative District Twenty-four is currently overpopulated by five hundred and seventeen people, this would help to even out the overpopulated District Twenty-four.
Ma'am. Thank you. We'll wrap that up. Please, we'll take the entire letter and put it into the record. Next up is State Representative John Kavanaugh, followed by Mayor Greg Bryan and William Engler.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing my testimony. State Representative John Kavanaugh, K-A-V-A-N-A-G-H, District Eight. My original reason for coming here, and it's still a reason, is to plead that Fountain Hills and Rio Verde be returned to its east valley neighbors, and to also publicly thank them for defending us and standing up for us. The so-called Fountain Hills gorge in the congressional district has become the poster child for problems with these maps, and I hope it's going to be corrected. However, recent events have also required me to make other comments. I think the results of a legislative committee which detailed numerous problems with the maps also needs to be heeded and dealt with. I think the basic problem was that the criteria of competitiveness was elevated to a second position below the Voter Rights Act, when in reality, the voters who passed Proposition 106 stated that the competitiveness issue should in fact be the last criteria. It's important, but it should not trump size, compactness, and boundaries, political and physical. I think the commission went wrong there. It's important that competitiveness be there, but it is a very subjective criteria, and that's the one that people can play games with. And whether that was done, or it simply looks that way, it appears the maps have been gerrymandered. And if you stuck to the original, very strict rules that the voters voted for, to first deal with compactness and equal size and communities of interest, I don't think you have gotten there. The second problem deals with the findings or the filings of the Attorney General, which suggest that one or more members of the commission have violated the open meetings law in a serious way, and in addition, in an area very important, namely-
Hold on, folks. Folks?
That one or more members of, that one or more members of the commission may have violated the open meeting law, and on the issue of the mapping firm, this is a critical decision and a controversial one. And if that in fact is true, then the process has been poisoned, and the fruits of the poisonous tree, which are the maps, should not be considered. I think at this point, it's incumbent on the commission to go back to the grid maps, use the real criteria, get a new mapping firm, and move forward clean without the cloud of controversy.
(APPLAUSE). Next up is Greg Bryan. William Engler, followed up by Barry Spikers.
I've never been welcomed that way in my own council meeting. That's great. Greg Bryan, G-R-E-G-B-R-Y-A-N, mayor of Arizona's newest community, Tucson, Arizona. We reside at the gates of Grand Canyon National Park, which is one of our concerns, in that the current draft of the map putting us in, I think it's District Six, splits it right at the park boundaries, and it separates us from a very large community of both Tucson area and the Grand Canyon National Park facilities and people that reside there. We have some grave concerns about being placed in with flagstaff. We incorporated to have some independence and not be associated with the urban area like that, and we feel we have much more in common with the folks that we've been voting with and worked with and represented by in the former District One, through Chino Valley, Prescott, and down into Sedona and the Verde Valley area. And we ask that we be placed back in that area of communities of interest with those communities as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is William Engler, followed by Barry Spikers and Susan Leeper.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturts. My name is Bill Engler, B-I-L-L-E-N-G-L-E-R, a resident of Anthem, and I want to speak to competitiveness, but before I do, on the homepage of the commission, you'll see a picture of all the commissioners. Also in that picture is Sandra Day O'Connor, retired Justice of the US Supreme Court. And you'll note that every, I was at the meeting where she spoke, and you'll note that all the commissioners sought to have their picture taken with her. The gist of what she said that day was that this commission, as mandated by the Constitution, should be independent, arrive at their decisions independently. And with what's happened in this state this week, I just wonder where we find ourselves now. I'm going to speak for the voters of Arizona. I'm not completely thrilled with the legislative map nor the congressional map. However, I believe the commission as a whole has done a good job. And I don't agree with Representative Kavanaugh in that competitiveness should not be considered in what you read this evening. It says competitiveness should be considered as long as not to the detriment of anything else. And I believe that in order not to disenfranchise the one-third of the population of this state, which have not declared their party preference, you should try to get competitive dis-ness. The voters of this state are not served well when people who can't vote in the primaries have no reason to go to the polls in November because their vote does not count. Thanks so much for hearing me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Next up is Barry Spikers, followed by Susan Leeper, and then next up after that is Karen Garrett. Mr. Spikers.
Thank you. I'm Barry Spiker, S-P-I-K-E-R, former precinct captain and resident of Fountain Hills. Thank you, commission members, for the opportunity to address this commission and getting my comments on the record. If you hold this drawing up to a mirror, you'll see it's essentially Congressional District Four in reverse. This drawing is the first gerrymandered, signed by Elbridge Gary, the governor of the state of Massachusetts in eighteen twelve. This is what you guys have done. What I'm going to say is, I don't understand from a business perspective why you would hire Strategic Telemetry when mapping is not your core line of business. They plainly said on their website up until July 7th that they worked on behalf of progressive organizations. The CEO, Ken Strasma, worked for the progressive lobbying group Effective Congress, and everyone knows that they are the first, and first and foremost, were a micro-targeting firm for President Obama. I speak the facts. This is a social networking and marketing work, and should be removed from any further proceedings. Again, from a business perspective, the National Demographic Corporation, who had a lower bid than Strategic Telemetry- than Strategic Telemetry, was also vying for the contract, and they had done this work for our state before. They know the state. They could have gotten up to speed much more quickly, and actually Strategic Telemetry used a number of their PowerPoint presentations, their PowerPoint presentations to educate us and the commissioners. Finally, in light of Ms. Mathis's absence and removal, I would like to know specifically what amendments, motions, or actions she ever voted on with just the two Republicans on the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spikers. Next up is Susan Leeper, followed by Karen Garrett, and then followed up by Bill Chambers.
In February two thousand eight...
Ma'am, hold on for one moment, please. The, our court reporter is having a difficult time with the, with being able to record with the applauding. And also, the clock doesn't stop or pause when the applauding takes place, so when you get up there to speak and there might be applause, or booing, or some other commentary that might be made, it might interfere with what you're trying to get on the record as well. So let's do the best we can at being, uh, understanding that this is an emotional issue and emotional time, and let's try to get our information on the record, and please make sure and spell your name for the court record.
My name is Susan Leeper, L-E-E-P-E-R. In February two thousand eight, Michelle Obama said, "For the first time in my adult lifetime, I am really proud of my country, and not just because Barack Obama has done well, but because I think people are hungry for change. I can say, for the first time in my adult lifetime, I am hungry for change too. I am extremely fearful for the future of my country because of the corruption I see in government, the decline of moral values, and the un-American influences attacking every facet of our government and society. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to this commission, who, in my opinion, has acted without integrity and balance." One egregious decision the commission made from the start was the selection of a Strategic Telemetry, a heavily partisan firm that performed micro-targeting to the precinct level for Obama two thousand eight. Clients listed on the website before being purged were mostly progressive or left-leaning, therefore hardly nonpartisan. The last criterion in the Arizona Constitution mentioned is creation of competitive districts where there is no significant detriment to other goals. The commission has ignored the requirement to create compact districts and protect communities of interest in favor of trying to create as many politically competitive districts as possible. Where is the logic for the suburban town of Fountain Hills to be cut out of your proposed CD Six, which surrounds it on three sides, and lumping the town into a district that stretches to an area south of Yuma and wends around to the northwest to include Kingman and Boulder City? Your proposed CD Six, which includes Scottsdale, rambles westward through commercial areas over highways and mountain ranges to Route Seventeen, when it makes more sense to keep Scottsdale together with the adjacent residential suburban communities of Fountain Hills, Cave Creek, and Carefree, to preserve these natural communities of interest? Is it just by coincidence that the way the lines are drawn, the new District Nine, which includes much of Ben Quail's present district and whose border is five-hundred feet from his house, does not have an incumbent, and that this action will likely result in a primary runoff between two of Arizona's conservative Republicans? I would just like to make two more remarks. An excerpt from the Hill of October sixth, "The new congressional map released by Arizona's bipartisan redistricting commission appears to give Democrats a major boost. It's Democrats' dream map."
Thank you, ma'am. And if you'd like to enter your documents for the record, that'd be fine. Okay? Next up is Karen Garrett. Ma'am? Ma'am, please. Uh, Karen, next up is Karen Garrett, followed by Bill Chambers and Gina Gennaro.
Karen, K-A-R-N, Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T. I just received an email from someone that I'm taking my time to read his comments. His name is Kevin C. Brown, Fountain Hills, Arizona. "As a twenty-year Fountain Hills citizen, I am outraged at the extreme gerrymandering efforts that rips us away from neighboring Scottsdale and tosses us into a congressional district that absolutely has zero in common with our community. Our family has circulated the draft map with community details to state and federal officials with the request to review each commission member's logic behind this travesty of justice. You have set the standards for political gerrymandering in the twenty-first century and should be ashamed of yourselves. We have lost any semblance of trust in your decisions and request that every one of you step down from your role, thereby allowing a newly created commission to uphold fairness in Arizona's congressional districts." I'm from Scottsdale and violate a visible graphic feature city-town and county boundaries in CDs One, Four, and Nine. This criteria is violated in multiple areas throughout the draft congressional map due to where you place city of Scotts, I mean Flagstaff, in both the CD and the legislative districts. Several counties could be kept whole if Flagstaff were placed in CD Four. I was tired, as I watched many of these proceedings, that Fountain Hills lobbied this commission like probably no other city in the state. Is Fountain Hills less important than Flagstaff? Lastly, improper consideration of the places of residence of incumbents and candidates. Of the eight incumbent congressmen, two Republicans have been divided from the vast majority of their current districts. No Democrat congressman has been divided from the population of their current districts. Two incumbent congressmen were moved into new districts, and it had to have gone down to the block level to have gotten Congressman Quail. Now, we're not supposed to make these important, but for you to go down to the block level to pull Congressman Quail means there's a violation of some sort. But, you know, I don't have enough time, but the last thing I wanted to say, that most numerous examples in the legislative draft drafting focusing on places of residence appears to occur in Pima County, where several Democrat incumbents appear to have been protected by breaking census tracts, and one incumbent stays with the bulk of his district by block redistricting literally down the middle of his street. If you want to learn more about what the egregious errors have been made, which most of you aren't aware of, that I would have you go to the legislative report, which is what I just read from, to allow you to know what these are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bill Chambers, Gina Gennaro, and Zofia Roner.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Bill Chambers, B-I-L-L-C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S. This originally timed out at two minutes and thirty seconds. I'm going to have to abbreviate it. I'm uncomfortable with the redistricting plan as currently proposed. There's a lack of public information about how the commission does our business. This perception may be shared by other members of the public who express themselves differently from what I'm about to say. The Arizona Constitution has six provisions for requiring adherence. The Voting Rights Act is clear and unmistakable. The remaining five-lettered provisions are qualified by the phrase "to the extent practicable", and the wording is not the fault of the commission, but this phrase makes these requirements flexible beyond being useful, something only a politician could love. Additionally, terms such as communities of interest and competitive are not well-defined, as already admitted by the chair in previous public forums. As with the concept of compactness, there are three or four legitimate definitions that could be used. Since the commission has not settled on a definition for each requirement, everyone has to supply his or her own meaning for each term within the context of his worldview. Assuming my definition is the same as yours makes useful public discussion almost impossible. Among the required criteria, there are no priorities established. Priorities are necessary to provide a uniform, rational basis for the actions and conclusions of the commission. However, in years past, redistricting in Arizona did have priorities, to the extent that three criteria were given more weight than the remaining criteria in both congressional and legislative districts. Those criteria were the Voting Rights Act, the compactness, and contiguousness. The remaining criteria were satisfied to the extent practicable. I ask that this whole thing be entered into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Just give it to Ms. Gomez, and your entire, the contents of your letter will be entered into the record. Next up is Gina Gennaro, Zofia Roner, and Sandra Fisher will be coming up in third.
Hello, my name is Gina Gennaro, G-I-N-A-G-E-N-N-A-R-O, and I would like to know, can I second somebody's testimony? That's a question. I would like to second Bill Engler's testimony about competitiveness. It is actually defined because it would be competitive. So if you have fifty percent Republican, fifty percent Democrat, or if you have thirty Republican, thirty Democrat, thirty Independent, that would be competitive. So I think underneath the voting rights, competitive should be, competitiveness should be the next thing. I think it's the most important thing. This way, we have to all listen to each other, as far as candidates, voters. If it's spread out, that's the way I would do it. What I have to ask you, though, is, is there a requirement for how many Republicans or Green Party or Libertarians in a district? Do you have the answer for that?
Ma'am, tonight is a night where we're taking comment.
Okay. Well, then, what I would do is, I would say that if you have nine districts, then you should try to, if you can't split it up so that it's competitive by Republican, Democrat, or Independent, then I would go to four-point-five districts that are Republican, four-point-five that are Democratic. That would be the way that it would be fair. And if you can't do that...
Independent.
Right. Well, thirty-one percent in the state are Independent, so you obviously should try to make more areas competitive based on that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next up is Zofia Roner, followed by Sandra Fisher and Jim Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Zofia Roner. I'm a mother that lives in the Scottsdale Unified District. Currently, the district is divided into two areas. The proposed map asks that the district, this unified school district, be cut up into three different areas. The fact is that the parents, the teachers, the students, we are a unified district because we have a unified goal about educating our children, about raising the money for our schools, and making sure that despite the legislature's decisions to undermine our children's education, we fight so that they receive that education. And I know that we're talking tonight a lot about gerrymandering. And I know that, yes, my district has been cut up into three, my school district has been cut up into three areas, but just because I don't like it, I'm not going to now tell the commission that they are gerrymandering, but I will ask them to make those changes. In addition, there has been some talk that competitiveness is to be considered less than the other criteria. There is actually an Arizona court ruling that says competitiveness is equal to the other criteria. It is not to be considered less than. That is a court ruling. So, have we overconsidered competitiveness? And I think as the last person spoke, there is no showing that competitiveness was overconsidered. In fact, despite Republicans only making up one-third of the population, they have four strong seats where they're going to win. In spite of the Independents making up one-third of the population, there is only one congressional district where they are the, have any chance of being the majority in that district. In terms of Democrats, they make up one-third of our population, and yet there is only two districts that Democrats have any control over. So, we know just from the facts, from the numbers, competitiveness has not been a major factor. But what we have seen in the last twenty-four in the first round was that a lot of communities of interest came together. For example, I am a community of interest. The Scottsdale Unified District is a community of interest because we care about our children. The different tribes that came in here, they are communities of interest, and their voices should be heard. So when they say we should be in one area, that's what makes the map look a little bit messy. And the fact is that the map that we have right now, when you see District Two, there's a skinny little line and then a big fat area, that looks much more strange than the current map, which actually is a lot more compact. So what I'm saying is, let us not play politics with our population. Let us remember that each of these criteria need to be listened to, and that all of our interests need to be added into this map. And so when people come on the record, and they perjure themselves when they lie, or when this commission does not give accurate information, that is when you have, a lot of people are angry, because we voted to keep politics out of here and to make sure that this commission considers all six criteria that we wanted. And we no longer want to be watched by the Department of Justice. We want to know that this state can stand on its own, and no longer will politics play games with us. And it's unfortunate that they are. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ma'am? 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 Could you spell your name, please?
My name is Zofia Roner, Z-O-F-I-A.
Write it over, please.
Last name, sorry. First name, Zofia, Z-O-F-I-A. Last name, Roner, R-A-W-N-E-R. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Sandra Fisher, followed by Jim, followed by Jim Morgan, and Linda Orto. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Fisher. Sandra, S-A-N-D-R-A, Fisher, F-I-S-C-H-E-R. While I agree that there were six criteria, the understanding from me is that there are two that absolutely the federal government requires, the Voting Rights Act and the equal population. The others, again, are important, important criteria. And I think what we're hearing tonight is that competitiveness has to be considered extremely equal, because too many people have said their voice has not been heard. And we find that with the Republicans having so much more of a voice in this area, that neither the Independents or Republicans have their voice heard. Same with you, when you hear the Indian nations, rural areas, they say their voice has not been heard. This independent commission needs to have, make it, these maps, make it so that every voice is heard and not just one ideology over another, which is what we have now, which is why the commission is under fire. And I find that reprehensible. And I think that we, again, this was supposed to be independent, politics was not supposed to play a part, and now it's in the middle of it. Something is definitely wrong with that regard. This is our chance here to tell you, I want to see that we have a chance, that we need to talk to each other, regardless of whether we're Republican, Democrats, or Independents, or Green Party, or whatever, and that when we go to vote, our voice is heard with that map, because they have to talk to us, because, at that point. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next up is Jim Morgan, followed by Linda and Patrice Kraus.
Good evening. My name is Jim Morgan, J-I-M-M-O-R-J-A-N. I am from the town of Fountain Hills, and just off the bat, I'd like to say I don't envy the position you guys have, the job you have, the task you have to figure this all out. It seems daunting to me. So, congratulations to those who are attempting to do this. Having said that, my main reason for being here is that I think that the splitting of Fountain Hills off from the old Congressional District into a new one is... Fountain Hills off from the old Congressional District into a new one is problematic for me, mainly because it, we don't have anything in common with all the other areas that we've been put with. And I basically like to agree with what Representative Kavanaugh had to say about this whole issue. It seems to me that you have tried to fix something that wasn't broken to begin with, and I really do question the independence of this commission from, from the decision that you have made to split Fountain Hills off from the old Congressional District. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next up, Linda Borto, followed by Patrice Kraus and Richard Tracy, Sr.
I'm just going to keep it really short. My name is Linda Borto, B like Boy, O-R, D like David, O-W. I'd like to echo everything people from Fountain Hills said about why we should keep our district where it is. It's kind of an unnatural placement that carved Fountain Hills out of that, which is why I think a lot of people from Fountain Hills accuse gerrymandering. We have, with that carve out of Fountain Hills, it's violated no less than three criteria, geographic features, communities of interest, and the contiguous and compact nature. We absolutely have nothing in common with the side of the state that borders with California, the rural area, and it strips away our partnership with Fort McDowell in the form of our cultural exchange. We have the River of Time Museum that we do a lot of work back and forth with the fort, as well as the schooling of the fort children, of which I am a volunteer at the school. It further spreads our district over three or more counties over 450 miles. No elected official could possibly effectively represent such a district. So I strongly urge the community to put Fountain Hills back in CD 6, along with Scottsdale, of which Fountain Hills was born back in 1974. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Patrice Kraus, Richard Tracy, Sr., and then Lynn Brier.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Patrice Kraus, P-A-T-R-I-C-E-K-R-A-U-S, as in Sam. I'm here on behalf of the City of Chandler. I'm here on behalf of the City of Chandler. The city's taken this process very seriously. I think I've only missed a handful of meetings during the whole time that the commission has met. We understand how important this is, and from the beginning, Chandler's mayor and council have made it a priority and have directed me to devote the time and attention that this critical matter deserves. We're happy with our legislative districts that have been proposed for Chandler in the draft map. The districts are compact, they reflect our community of interest, they give us the fair opportunity to elect someone who will understand our issues and who will represent our city. I realize this is the time when the commission will likely be making changes to the maps. If the commission contemplates any changes to our proposed district, I would just ask that we be given an opportunity to work directly with the commission and staff on these proposals so that we can ensure that our goals as a community continue to be met. In closing, I just want to say I know how tedious and often thankless this work has been and how it must seem like that from this perspective. I personally would like to say I appreciate the willingness to, that you've had to listen to our concerns as a city, and I want to thank you for your service to the state of Arizona. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Richard Tracy, Sr., followed by Lynn Brier and Richard Brier. Mr. Tracy had to leave? Okay, thank you. Next up is Lynn Brier, followed by Richard Brier and Charles Russell.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, I'd like to pop the...
Say your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn Brier, L-Y-N-N-E-B-R-E-Y-E-R. I want to pop the registration myth. Voter registration in the state of Arizona at this moment, I believe, is 30% Democrat, 33% Independent, and 36% Republican. This does make a difference. It is not one-third, 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 despite the myth. I'm going to just talk one second about why these legislative districts look so tortured. It's because there are five legislative districts that reach 50% or more Hispanic or Native American voting age population. This automatically kicks into retrogression. Up to 25, or 27% of the new LD maps will have a minority-majority population. These areas can never, ever retrogress to less than 61% or so. As to the communities of interest, I looked at Congressional District 9 down to the block level, and I follow that boundary, if I can count on that boundary to be accurate. That boundary does definitely show gerrymandering. It's, it goes across the road and into a residential neighborhood and plucks one or two blocks out of that neighborhood and puts it into 9. And this affects four other congressional districts as well. In some areas, in one area of Paradise Valley, it actually cuts between two houses that are side by side on the same street and puts them in separate districts in Paradise Valley. It goes on and it takes out a half a block here, one side of a street there, a few houses in another neighborhood are left out of the district while the rest of the neighborhood is in the district. This does not happen naturally. One of the criteria is to follow natural boundaries, and this, this CD 9 does not begin to follow any kind of natural boundaries, natural boundaries being mountain ranges or thoroughfares or something like that. It definitely reaches in and takes away rights of voters in given residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Richard Brier, followed by Charles Russell and Dorothy Campbell.
Thank you. My name is Richard Brier, last name B-R-E-Y-E-R. I live in Scottsdale with my wife, and we also have a property in Pinetop, Arizona. You've gerrymandered both of those districts by splitting them in half. Congressional District 1, you've mixed urban and renewal, or urban and rural. You've legislatively, you've separated Pinetop and Cholo, which is a community of interest, two communities of interest. You've stated District 1 includes reservation from the Hill River in the northeast all the way over to the North West. There's no community of interest, and there's not even a competitive situation there because no Republican will ever be put in that district again if that, if that takes place. Finally, one, excuse me, I'm speaking. One of the goals was to use the natural boundaries to keep the cities and communities together. You failed to do so throughout the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Next up is Charles Russell, followed by Dorothy Campbell and Eric Kurland.
Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Charles Russell, C-H-A-R-L-E-S-R-U-S-S-E-L-L. I live in South Scottsdale, about two and a half miles west of here, and I've been there for about 30 years. I chose the spot because it was convenient, both from a geographical perspective from where I work, as well as amongst my friends and like-minded people. As far as the district that is proposed for me, the Legislative District 24, you've heard everyone speak about the communities of interest and the considerations given to geographical boundaries. I wish to make an exception on Legislative District 24 from the compact and contiguous perspective. It's a big stretch in my mind to understand how something 55 miles long and 20 miles wide can be considered compact, especially for an urban area. And with the center of that 55-mile-wide district shaped being two miles wide, holding the two bells together, it really is a stretch in my mind how that can be considered contiguous. I'm in that two-mile connector and in that zone between those two larger areas, and I feel the sole purpose of that little stretch there is to bring two areas completely disparate with little common interest together. I ask that you return to your drawing board and place the three district neighborhoods or distinct neighborhoods in legislative districts that are of like mind and interest, and provide representatives from the district a chance to actually talk to their constituents without spending most of their time on the road. As for the Congressional District 9, I also ask that you reconsider your suggestion there and place me in the City of Scottsdale. I understand the population cutoff for the CDs is very nearly what Scottsdale's population is right now. I live in Scottsdale. I'd like to team with my fellow citizens to decide my state and federal representation. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Dorothy Campbell, followed by Eric Kurland and Nancy Mario.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dorothy Campbell, D-O-R-O-T-H-Y, Campbell, C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. I am a resident of the Verde's Communities. At the present time, we are in District 6. The proposal is that we become part of District 4. I would like you to consider that our borders to the north and east of us are the Tonno National Forest. We interact with the communities of Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell, and we wish, I wish, and I know many of my friends do too, to remain in District 6. We are development of residential homes. We rely upon our neighboring communities for communication, whether that be the TV, radio, newspapers. We rely on their communities for cultural activities as well, also economic. We contribute to the economy of Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, and the gambling at Fort McDowell so that we have no shopping in our area. We go to Scottsdale, Fountain Hills area, and we wish to remain with them. All access to our communities comes through District 6, the draft of District 6. We only can reach our communities through Scottsdale or through the Scottsdale-Fountain Hills group area. So please do not remove us from District 6. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Campbell, next up is Eric Kurland, followed by Nancy Mario and Doris Freeman. And before you start, Eric, Marty, how are we doing? All right. Mr. Kurland.
Eric with a C, Kurland, K-U-R-L-A-N-D. I'd like to thank you. I might not agree with how you got on the commission, but I thank you for serving as a volunteer. One of the things that happens with volunteers is they just never get paid enough. It's a tough room.
Tough crowd. Tough crowd.
I'll take part of my two minutes to get a little bit of laughter. I, I am an Independent, and I just feel very badly that the one person who is supposed to represent my interest was improperly booted before her time in the wrong venue. Before I get back to that subject, I will say that if you do not split my house in half, I will be fine. I heard the tape. One person, one vote. I have one vote, I will try to influence as many more, but as long as you don't split my house, my wife and I can still sleep in the same room, I am fine. I will talk to my representative. I would like to thank Representative Kavanaugh, my representative, for speaking in the appropriate venue tonight. I might not agree with what he says, but I am really happy that he came and said it. I do not agree with his vote the other night, or even taking up that vote, because I believe that was the inappropriate venue. I think he talked about stick with the rules that the voters voted for. I think that's a quote. The rules that the voters voted for was what's in my registration, Independence. Declaration of Independence is cool, Independence of the Committee, not so cool. Eventually, the Independent member of this committee will have to vote with a Republican or a Democrat. That's just the way it works. They can't just vote by themselves because there's either a yes or a no. So I'd like to just end by saying, there is no poisonous fruit from the tree. There is only the legislature, and I would say not the Democrats or the Independents in the legislature, but the Republicans who have stepped on and trampled that fruit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is, next up is Nancy Mario, followed by Doris Freeman and Karen Van Hoofd.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nancy Mario, N-A-N-C-Y, M-A-R-I-O. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to start first by saying that I'm really very disappointed that there's only four Commissioners here and not five. I'm a registered Democrat. I'm sorry.
I'm the only Commissioner here this evening. We've got...
But I'm saying that there are only, I'm saying, what I mean to say is, there are only four Commissioners at, at this point, at this moment, and not five. The removal of Chairman, Chairwoman Mathis, I believe, was in over, was overstepped their bounds by the Governor and also the Senate, Senator Russell Pierce. I'm a registered Democrat, and I live in Paradise Valley. I am one of very, very few Democrats in Paradise Valley, but what I want to say to you is this. I believe in the political process. I believe Democrats and Republicans and Independents can get along, can, can make decisions that are difficult, but, but that are fair. I believe in Prop 106, and I believe it was appropriate. I believe an independent commission is appropriate, and I'm, I'm certain that you will do the best you can to make sure the districting is done properly. My last comment has to do with competitiveness. I believe that when you look at the three major parties, and everyone has spoken of the percentages, that when you look at the Republicans, the Democrats, and the Independents as a group of registered voters, they equal approximately 99% of all the registered voters in Arizona. I believe that each district, as closely as you can, needs to be equally represented by those three political parties. I also want you to think about and consider what the voting behavior is of Independents, because Independents may not be pigeonholed into either a Democratic or Republican ideology and consider their voting behavior in history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Doris Freeman, followed by Karen Van Hoofd and Jim Judge.
That's D-O-R-I-S-F-R-E-E-M-A-N. Thank you. I have been to several of the registering meetings. I've never asked to speak before. I've asked to speak tonight mainly because of the actions that were taken this week that I really think are despicable and criminal. So you know where I stand on that. I've lived in Arizona for several, a number of decades. I've been in the same home, in the same district, and legislative district for over 30 years. In 1964, I was a kid for Goldwater. I have been a Republican, an Independent, and a Democrat. However, I don't think Goldwater would recognize what's going on in his state today. I don't think he would like it. He might recognize it, but he wouldn't like it. Number two, what I'd like to say is, during the time that I have lived in this same CD 3, LD 11 area, I have never been represented. I have been taxed, but I have never, ever been represented. I will tell you how. I have written to my congressperson and my legislators over and over. I have called their offices. When I call their offices, I usually never, ever get a phone back, phone call back. When I write to them, whether it's through email, or as it used to be in the regular mail, I would get a form, letter, response only. I never had my issues addressed. I never had my questions answered. It is the same today as it was over 30 years ago. The reason for that is gerrymandering. If you look at the history of the state, we have had gerrymandering for one political party purposes for 99 years. 10 years ago, the voters elected and voted to stop that practice. They attempted. They attempted 10 years ago. It didn't happen completely, but it was a little bit better than it had been for the previous 89 years. Now, we have had, we have an attempt this year to try to institute a system whereby everyone can be represented, maybe not as much as they would like, but at least some representation. In my case, and in many other areas, we have had zero representation. I don't want that to continue. I don't want that to continue for my great-grandnephews that live in the same area I do. That's why I've lived there. I don't want them to have to deal with being ignored as a voter, as I have been. Ignored, taxed, but ignored. That was why our forefathers ostensibly fought a revolution. Is that what it's going to take again? And when Mr. Kavanaugh says that competitiveness is the least important, he is wrong. He is absolutely wrong. To me, it's the most important. I just want to remind people who approve of this past week's actions, you think you live in a Republican state? You don't. You live in a banana republic.
Thank you very much. Next up is Karen Van Hoofd, followed by Jim Judge and Ann B. Denome.
Good evening, and thank you...
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karen Van Hoofd, K-A-R-E-N-Van-Hoofd, H-O-O-F-T. I'm here tonight as a citizen who has a particular community of interest, and that is not a geographical one or a one of a particular city. It's a community of interest of those people who want to see us function well as a state and stop yelling at each other from opposite ends of the political ideologies. I think the thing that is the most important of the characteristics that we are looking for is to try to find competitive districts, and that is because competitive districts will bring us people who can talk to each other, because they have to. They have to attract people who are going to listen to them from a fair point of view and not from one of the extremes. So, that is a community of interest of people who want to see things get sane in this state. I was very distressed as having been a supporter of Prop 106 ever since it came up years ago, and it was an independent redistricting commission. I'm so distressed by what has happened this week because I see independents flying out the door. This should not have happened. People I've talked to are absolutely astounded that this could have happened, and I think we need to get back to some sanity. I don't think we should start this process over. I think we need to move in considering some of these changes. I see some problems with the maps, particularly, I'd like to affirm some of the things that were said with respect to the Indian communities. It doesn't seem logical to have the ones that are Maricopa County-based be with rural groups. And there are some other problems I see, such as with Fountain Hills. But I believe that the commission has made a good start, and I think that we should be supportive of them to continue their work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jim Judge, followed by Arnie and Brian Kaufman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Judge, J-I-M-J-U-D-G-E. I'm here tonight representing the Town Council of Fountain Hills. They have their regularly scheduled council meeting tonight. A resolution by the mayor and council of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, urging the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission to reconsider its determination regarding placement of the town of Fountain Hills on the finalized draft six. The draft map assigned the town of Fountain Hills to Congressional District Four while surrounding communities of interest, including the city of Scottsdale, Fort McDowell, Yavapai Nation, the Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community. The surrounding communities are located in Congressional District Six. The draft map fails to set forth a reasonable district shape and longstanding relationship of the town and the surrounding communities, who have strong ties with one another in many respects, including joint cooperation and coordination of fire and emergency medical services. The town and Fort McDowell jointly promote and fund tourism efforts through a common tourism bureau and various other events, and the economies of the town and Fort McDowell are inextricably linked. The town and Fort McDowell share a common school system, school district, and the children of both communities share many of the same schools. The current boundary between District Four and District Six divides those tightly bound communities of interest into separate congressional districts, splintering representation of the town and aligning it with rural Arizona communities with whom it has very few common interests. The shape and extreme diverse and remote geographical location of the major population centers of proposed District Four creates substantial difficulties for a representative elected from one portion of the district to another. I will wrap up. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the town of Fountain Hills that the mayor and council request that the IRC approve an amendment to the draft map to alter the boundary lines between District Four and District Six to include the town and its neighbor community of Rio Verde within District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. If you would give that, Mr. Judge, if you give that document to Ms. Gomez right behind you?
I'm sorry.
If you'd give that document to Ms. Gomez right behind you, we can include it in the record. Next up is Arlie, the queen of everything, as she has listed here, followed by Brian Kaufman and Margaret Granis.
Good evening. My name is Arlie Denome, A-R-L-I-E, D-E-N-O-M-E. And yes, sometimes I have been called the queen of everything. I find that unfortunately, this commission entirely insults our intelligence. We are a suburban community. We have very unique natural beauty and especially strong community feelings with Scottsdale, our Yavapai neighbors in Fort McDowell, our crown, and also the Verde's. I find it inappropriate to be away from this family, and I would strongly ask you to reconsider the boundaries. I totally support the natural ties that we now have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Brian Kaufman, followed by Margaret Granas or Granis, and next up is Marcia Imber.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Brian Kaufman, B-R-I-A-N, and K-A-U-F-M-A-N. I'm here today to ask you to break up your draft District 24. I think you've heard a few people comment that. And I'm also here to ask you, when you do that, to stick South Scottsdale, that extreme South Scottsdale that's in 24, to stick that with the rest of Scottsdale. I don't think breaking up 24 is too controversial. You've already heard from former minority leader Ken Chevron that he wants his central Phoenix area to be separate from the Indian Reservation, and you've also heard tonight from the Indian Reservation requesting to be kept in the East Valley District with Scottsdale and that area. And so, I think if you follow both those reasonable requests, the question mark remaining is, what do you do with Scottsdale? And I'd just ask you not to keep that with Phoenix, because those precincts have been stuck with, kind of tacked on to Tempe for the last 10 years, and it's been a little rough politically, because being, having such a small influence in the Tempe District, we've always been represented by Tempeans, and it's just been awkward politically. And I just foresee that if you stick that small area with a Phoenix District, it's going to be the same for the next 10 years. So, that's basically it. I'd ask you to put South Scottsdale with the rest of Scottsdale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. Next up is Margaret Granis, followed by Marcia Imber and Paul Briarly.
My name is Margaret Granis, M-A-R-G-A-R-E-T-G-R-A-N-N-I-S. My family lives just north of Indian School and west of Pima Road. For the last 20 years, we have been disenfranchised. We vote, but I don't know why, because the district is not competitive. I know you have other things to consider, but in that particular area, I don't think any of the other considerations bear nearly so much as putting us, please, in a competitive district. I'm not asking for things my way. I just want it to be competitive so we have a chance, and our vote will count one way or the other. Now, it's just, I can see why people don't bother to vote. It's stupid to vote when you know that it's not going to make a bit of difference. If you could please gerrymander us into Tempe, gerrymander us into Tempe or Phoenix, just to the slightly south and west of us, where we would economically and socially, we are more in tune, up to Camelback Road. You can see your line there. If you'd please move it up to Camelback Road instead of Thomas, and put us either in Tempe or Phoenix to the west of us, we would have a chance for our vote to count. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before we go, Marty, how are we doing? Good? Next up is Marcia Imber, followed by Paul Briarly and Jean Fazario, I believe.
I am Marcia Imber, M-A-R-C-I-A. I am B-E-R. I live in CD-3 and Legislative District 11, and I simply agree with the people who said we have been unrepresented for many years, and we are unanswered with letters and so on. I have faith in you people to do the job appropriately, and if you don't, I'm hoping the Department of Justice will fix that, but I think you will do that, and I'm incensed about this removal of the chairman. Absolutely, I think it was a power grab, and I just hate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Briarly, followed by Jean Fazario and Bonnie Snead.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturts. My name is Paul Briarly, B-R-I-E-R-L-E-Y. I'm here representing the Arizona Farm Bureau tonight, and I want to read part of the statement that we'll submit for the record.
Thank you.
Arizona Farm Bureau is a grassroots organization representing 22,000-member families statewide. We appreciate the hard work of the commission and realize that there are many factors to balance as you create maps that will best represent Arizona residents. Having said that, we are very concerned about the effect that the draft maps would have on rural communities. In our view, keeping communities of interest together so that they can elect like-minded representatives is the best way to provide effective representation. The draft maps appear to have inappropriately split many rural communities of interest in order to meet other objectives. One of Arizona's strongest communities of interest is our rural areas. They share much in common with each other, no matter how far apart they may be. Their voices can be drowned out by an urban population that may be closer in proximity, but not in ideology. Some of our most cherished commodities from the five Cs include cotton, copper, citrus, and cattle, all of which come from our rural communities. Ensuring the survival of these industries will require rural communities of interest to be represented at the state capital and in Washington, DC. It's crucial that rural communities be grouped with other rural communities, not with an urban corner of the district that will drown out their voice. Many of the districts as drawn absolutely nullify the rural voice. We see many areas of concern with the maps, and I'd like to point out a few examples of which I speak. Yuma is split in two for both legislative and congressional districts, meaning that their rights to the Colorado River could be shepherded by representatives from Pima and Maricopa Counties, both of which have a strong interest in obtaining more of that resource. The rural CD that runs from the southern to northern borders on the east side of the state could end up with someone from North Tucson as their representative. And agricultural areas in the West Valley are split into four CDs and as many legislative districts. Cottonwood is kept whole with the Verde Valley in the congressional map, but it's split off to Flagstaff in the legislative map. I'll wrap up. In closing, we ask you to remember that if you combine rural and urban populations, the rural residents will lose their voice in state and national politics. This violates not only their rights, their mandates in the Voter Rights Act, but it jeopardizes some of the treasures that make Arizona a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briarly. Next up is Jean Fazario, I believe, followed by Bonnie Snead and Evelyn Mary Munn.
Hi. I've got a proxy for Jean. He had to go. My name is Tim Horn, H-O-R-N, last name. I'm a resident of Scottsdale, and by complete disclosure, I'm a conservative. And I actually was a conservative Democrat when that was still permitted. Today, I'm a conservative. I've been an independent for a long time. And here's what I have to say about what you guys are doing. First of all, thank you. I do a lot of volunteer work. I've been involved in politics as well for years. The problem that we've got here is, I've heard people say things like, "Gosh, we ought to all just be able to get along." And I've heard them detail things about this street and that side of the street and so forth, and while all that's good, I don't think that's the real big issue. People would like to have us all get along, but the fact of the matter is, we are in a life struggle right now for this country. We're in desperate opposition, and it's just the beginning. It's not the end. What all of us want, on either side, is fairness. And the problem that we have with this, the way this commission's been done and the information that's come out, isn't especially its information that's come out as far as I'm concerned. It's the issue of fairness. When this proposition was passed in 2000, what we wanted in our state was kind of a trophy for fairness, to eliminate the parties from the shenanigans that have always gone on in this thing called gerrymandering. The reality is that while that trophy was there and it was pulled into, let's say, the fortress of our freedom, what's happened is, it opened up, and what fell out was things that were unfair, people that were representing one side more than the other. Now, if that's the case, no matter what is done, no matter how it changes, this group will be discredited from fairness. And what we need is a fair battlefield, because that's really what we're doing here. We're specifying what our battlefield is, and whether you're left or right, we need it to be fair. This thing needs to be scrapped, the commission redone, and let's start with an attitude of beginning with fairness in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next up is Bonnie Snead, followed by Evelyn Mary Munn and Robert Depp.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Snead, B-O-N-N-I-E-S-N-E-E-D. I am here as a governing board member of the Scottsdale Unified School District, and we have already submitted a resolution to the committee, but I wanted to, in a public forum, just reiterate our feelings on the issue. The governing board of the Scottsdale Unified School District thanks the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission for holding this public hearing in Scottsdale. That was one of the things that we had asked for. The Scottsdale Unified School District was founded in 1896 and has a current student population of 26,400 pre-K through 12 students, and we are a political subdivision of the state of Arizona governed by the laws of the state of Arizona and the Arizona Department of Education. As a community of interest, the Scottsdale Unified School District desires that the best interest of its stakeholders be considered during the redistricting process as it impacts their future representation at the Arizona Legislature and the United States Congress. Scottsdale Unified School District is concerned that the legislative and congressional districts for our stakeholders be properly compact and contiguous, respectful of communities of interest, which includes the unified school district population, and considerate of geographical boundaries. We respectfully request that the Scottsdale Unified School District population be split into no more than two legislative and/or congressional districts, as we have worked hard over the last 10 years especially to unify our district and not separate different populations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Folks, I've got about 50 more speakers, and 50 times 2 equals 100, and that's going to take us past 9 o'clock. So, I'm going to, so, it's not our opportunity. The doors are being closed on us.
Let's ask the mayor.
I'll have staff ask that question, but what I will ask of you, if there's anyone, please, please, ma'am, please. What I'd like to do is that if anyone has a statement that they already have pre-prepared and they wanted it read into the record, if you know that you're going to be doing that, submit it to make sure that it gets into the record if we don't make it through the time tonight. I'd also like to ask staff to go ahead and check with the operations folks if there's any opportunity of us going past the 9 o'clock time, so that we can honor all these folks' hard time and effort of coming out this evening.
Thank you.
So, next up is Evelyn Mary Munn, but I can't guarantee a thing, folks. All I can do is to say that we'll give it a try. Evelyn Mary Munn, followed by Robert Depp and Joan Chiaza.
Thank you. My name is Evelyn Mary Munn, E-V-E-L-Y-N-M-A-R-Y-M-U-N-N. I thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. As a former mayor and council member in Walnut Creek, California, I cannot tell you that I have never seen guidelines or Voters' Rights Acts so blatantly disregarded as I have seen in Arizona. And what it really is called is really the G-word, gerrymander. In fact, the congressional district map here looks like a Rorschach inkblot test. It makes no sense to us. We would worry if it made sense to you. Be fair. Do it over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Robert Depp, Joan Chiaza, or Joan Chiaza, my apologies, and Nancy Ordowski.
My name is Bob Deppe, B-O-B-D-E-P-P-E. Congressional District Four, it runs from Colorado City down to- Congressional District 4, it runs from Colorado City down to Yuma, with a finger pointing, okay, Congressional District 4 runs from Colorado City to Yuma with a finger pointing down to Fountain Hills. I'm from Fountain Hills. I go to Scottsdale a lot. I've been to the Senior Center many times. If I have to go to the hospital, I go to Scottsdale. Let's face it, Fountain Hills is a suburb of Scottsdale. Fountain Hills may look like Lake Havasus City, but we have nothing in common. We have no contact. We don't belong with them in the same district. We belong with Scottsdale. My other point is, the district population is basically in the west. A congressional representative that runs for Congress will likely run from the west somewhere. What do they care about Fountain Hills? Again, we're at the end of the finger pointing down here. They're not going to bother with us. You've got a certain amount of Republicans that are going to vote one way, a certain amount of Democrats another way, and they're not going to spend any time with us because you're not going to change their dynamics that much. So what's going to happen to Fountain Hills? We're not going to be represented any longer in Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deppe. Next up is, I believe, Joan Chiaza. John Chiaza, my apologies.
John Chiaza, and it's C.H.I.A.Z.Z.A. I am a 23-year resident of Gilbert. I want to compliment the Independent Redistricting Commission for the tough job they're trying to do. The maps you are trying to finalize are not going to please all of us. I still think more competitive districts should be closely looked at, even if communities of interest are split up. Please continue your work and push hard to make districts balanced, fair, and competitive. I think the removal of the chair of this commission by our elected officials is truly a travesty. This commission was to be free of political input by elected officials. It is a known fact that the Arizona State Senate was happy with the maps. It was the pleading of the two congressional incumbents to our governor that pushed this majority party into breaking the law and ignoring the Constitution, just to protect the incumbents from the true competitiveness. The governor and the Republican-held Senate has broken the process that was the actual will of the people. I would hope the chair of this commission stay on and complete her work and let the courts rule on this illegal power grab by the majority party of this state. The gross misconduct of the majority party soundly proves why it is so critical that this commission should make sure things like this do not happen again. This is exactly why the commission was put into place by the people. We need to have competitive districts and a balanced voice at the Capitol so there is no runaway takeover by one party, as we have just seen this past week. I was in the gallery of the Senate when this vote took place to remove the chair of this commission. When I left, I felt like I was watching Nazi Germany in action. This kind of politics is ruining, ruining the state, ruining the fabric of this country, and I would hope it would inspire this commission even more now to move towards a balance and fairness so all of Arizona can be once heard in our government. Thank you for all of your hard work. I hope you continue to make this process in favor of the people and not the politicians.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Nancy, next up is Nancy Ordowski, Jerry Gettinger, and Nancy Beal.
My name is Nancy, N.A.N.C.Y., Ordowski, O.R.D. as in David, O.W.S.K.I. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm from Fountain Hills, and like somebody mentioned earlier, it's like you stuck a finger in the pie and took Fountain Hills and Rio Verde out, thus following, not following the directives of the compact and contiguous areas. Fountain Hills is a community of around 21,000 people. We have no community of interest with the rural areas of Arizona. As nice as the people are in these areas, we still have no relationship with them in our service, in our communities. Our interest is with Scottsdale and Fort McDowell. We need to be placed in C.D. 6. Fort McDowell students are part of our Fountain Hills School District, and I appreciate what the president of the Salt River and Yavapai Communities have said tonight. By pulling Fountain Hills out of the C.D. 6 area, it does not appear to me that you've met the state constitutional redistricting laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Following is Jerry Gettinger, followed by Nancy Beal and Patty Stetson. Is Jerry here? He is left. Nancy Beal, followed by Patty Stetson and Lori Coe.
My name is Nancy Beal, B.U.E.L.L., and as a community volunteer, I just want to commend you all for being on this commission. It's certainly been a thankless job, and I hope you can continue with it. One factor that I find important is competitiveness, because so many places in the state, everybody's vote does not count. So I hope you can continue with all your members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Patty Stetson, followed by Lori Coe and Harold Stahl.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the job that you have done as the Redistricting Commission. I'm here for two reasons. I'm a citizen of Scottsdale. My name is Patricia Stetson, spelled S.T.E.T.S.O.N. I was out of the state when the hearings began, but when I returned, my perception and what I heard was my very favorite congressman was no longer in my district, and I decided to attend the first possible meeting, which was the meeting that they approved the final draft map. I was little concerned when two of the board members made the comment, and they were the conservative board members, that they had not had the time sufficient to review what had happened over the weekend of the tweaking of the map, and therefore they could not, in good conscience, vote either yea or nay on this particular issue, because they did not have the information, and I quote one, "He did not have time to run the numbers." However, the chairman went ahead with calling the vote, and it passed with one abstention and one no. So I would like, if that's my perception, if that's what happened, I would really like to consider that maybe there was a misrepresentation of the map that was presented to all the members of the chair of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lori Coe, followed by Harold Stahl and Jonathan Albina and David, all signing up on the same sheet.
Good evening. I'm very grateful to be here, and I am also grateful for the commission and the work that you've done. I've lived in Arizona for 33 years, and I've been affiliated with several parties, so it's about what's going on today. I wouldn't have even come to a redistricting meeting because I don't know anything about it, but when the legislature voted to take the commissioner off, that really, really pushed me to come tonight. I am here because I feel as a citizen who pays taxes in our state, who works in our state and makes a living, who's raised their family in the state, I feel that as a voter, I have been transgressed. We voted in 2000 for this commission to be empowered outside of politics. I am satisfied that if there is a representation with two Democrats, two Republicans, and if I was an independent right now, I would feel underrepresented. So I would like to just state this for the record, that I am very angry, and I feel that all of us should be, at how this process just happened on Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've just been noticed that we will be able to stay here until 9:15. I've just got, if we stick to our two minutes, everybody, and we're efficient getting up to the microphone, we should be able to make it through our list. So, Mr. Harold Stahl, followed by Jonathan Uquierdez and Jim O'Connor.
I'm Harold Stahl, from the Biltmore Arcadia area of Phoenix. I'm representing myself. In a previous appearance before this commission, I implored Chair Colleen Mathis to stand firm against the high-level partisan political pressure which was then being applied to the commission. I'm here to congratulate Colleen Mathis in particular and the commissioners for standing up and retaining the independence of the redistricting process against unjustified and malicious charges by the Arizona governor, the secretary of state, and the Republican members of the Arizona Senate. You have heard and you will hear requests for changes, including those for improvements in the lines affecting geographic areas such as mine, the Biltmore Arcadia area of Phoenix. It's reasonable to include this area with Paradise Valley, for example, as a community of interest. These requests are quite proper and stand in stark contrast to the tactics of those politicians who are engaging in an unprecedented power grab to assert the political will of the people. Please continue to work for fair and competitive voting districts, and you will continue to earn the admiration of a grateful electorate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jonathan. And because all three of you included yourselves on one sheet, if you can keep the entire presentation to two minutes, I would truly appreciate it.
I'd like to thank the commission for hearing us. I'm a student. We're students at Arizona State, and we worked on a congressional map that we'd like to propose that focused on more competitiveness, as far as the districts are concerned, mainly 6 and 9. 6, according to the presidential election of '08, 6 was almost at 58% Republican, and District 9 was a little under 47%. We did our best regarding to communities to keep them intact, but we arranged, we managed to get 6 down to 55% Republican to try to make it more competitive, and District 9 to about 50-50%. The rest of the moves we made were intended to try to keep the populations even, and also, like I said, to use natural boundaries in communities to keep everything intact. Just like to thank the commission for all the work that they've done and for hearing us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you spell your names, please?
Jonathan Uquierdez, J.O.N.A.T.H.A.N., U.R.Q.U.I.D.E.Z.
Keep going.
So, I'm just here, my name's Albina, A.L.B.I.N.A., H.I.D.I.C., and I just want to thank the commission for doing such hard work, but I would like to give you guys a proposal to continue working and hear us all out so we can have that fairness thing, because I think that's really important, to make everybody happy, since we are all citizens of Arizona, and my political standpoints are not more important than anybody else's here. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jim O'Connor, City Councilmember Reverend Littlefield, and I'm not sure, and I apologize for, Councilmember Littlefield for having him find it in the slot, and then Sherri Smith Dodson. So Jim O'Connor? Jim O'Connor is here or not here? Jim O'Connor is left. Councilmember Mr. Littlefield, please.
My name is Bob Littlefield, L.I.T.T.L.E.F.I.E.L.D. I've been on the Scottsdale City Council for nine and a half years, and I'm here tonight to talk about the community of interest standard. One of the things that disturbs me about both the congressional and the legislative map is that on both maps you've cut off South Scottsdale, south of Osborne and Thomas, from the rest of Scottsdale. And I believe that's a real violation of the community of interest standard. We have a situation in the legislative which is particularly important to the city, and by the way, I should say, we don't have districts in Scottsdale, so our political futures are not impacted by this at all. But it is important that South Scottsdale has been cut off from the rest of Scottsdale in all of these maps. And that's particularly pernicious, because in the nine and a half years I've been on the city council, I hear often from residents of South Scottsdale that they often feel almost disenfranchised and certainly cut off from the rest of Scottsdale already, and this would make it even worse. I know the Scottsdale Unified School District is also concerned about this issue, and I believe they may even have somebody here to testify tonight. But it would certainly be, it would certainly move forward on the community of interest standard to move South Scottsdale back in with the rest of Scottsdale, particularly on the congressional map, but really particularly in the legislative map, because we at the city and in the school district have a lot of interaction with the legislature, and it would certainly be important for South Scottsdale to be with the rest of Scottsdale, both from a practical standpoint and frankly from a symbolic standpoint, too. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Sherri Smith Dodson, followed by John Gallagher and Mark Grenna.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Sherri Smith Dodson. I'm the vice president of legislation for the Scottsdale Parent Council. The Scottsdale Parent Council is an all-volunteer parent organization dedicated to supporting excellence in teaching and learning in all Scottsdale Unified School District schools through parent education, communication, and legislative advocacy. I'm here today on behalf of the SPC Executive Board to ask you to give serious consideration to an important component of your charge. Please keep our community of interest intact as you redraw our state legislative districts. As an active group of parent advocates for our public schools, we know that the more legislatively divided our school district is, the less impact we can have as a collective group of concerned parents on policies that affect our schools. Scottsdale Unified School District currently overlays three legislative districts, 8, 11, and 17. The legislators in LD 8 and 11 know that the bulk of their constituents lie within the boundaries of our school district, and they are actively engaged with us in decisions about public school policies. Conversely, the one school in our district that lies within LD 17 is largely isolated from our advocacy efforts, since the elected officials from that district are rightfully more concerned with the school districts that comprise the bulk of their legislative district. Limiting the legislative districts within Scottsdale Unified's boundaries is an important consideration for our community of interest. We are one school district with a set of distinct and unique interests, with our community warrants legislative representation that is as focused as possible. While we understand that our issue cannot be the sole focus of your work, it is important to keep in mind that the law admonishes that boundaries should, quote, "respect communities of interest to the extent practicable," end quote. We hope this commission seriously considers our community of parent advocates for the Scottsdale Unified School District when deciding where to draw the legislative district boundaries. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ma'am, Sherri, could you spell your name, please?
S.H.E.R.R.I. Smith, S.M.I.T.H. Dodson, D.O.D.G.S.O.N.
Thank you very much. Next up is John Gallagher, Mark Grenna, and Dr. Janie Hydrick.
Hi, my name is John Gallagher, J.O.H.N., G.A.L.L.A.G.H.E.R. Members, remaining members of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your dedication and service. At this point, if you have to select a fifth member of the commission, I'm not sure why anyone would want to serve on a commission, though, whose independence has been compromised. When a commissioner can be removed for reasons that are arbitrary and capricious, but for no reason at all, when a coalition of incumbent congressmen doesn't like the lines you draw, it seems like the commission isn't really independent. Now, why do I say it's arbitrary and capricious? Well, I was at the Senate hearings when they voted to remove Colleen Mathis, and one senator said, "Well, gross misconduct is whatever we decide it is. That's arbitrary." Another said, "Well, it's like pornography. I can't tell you what it is, but you know it when you see it. That's arbitrary. That's capricious." So earlier Representative Kavanaugh talked about that the Attorney General is investigating violations of the open meeting law and improprieties in the selection of the mapping firm, and what he said, "If that is in fact true, the fruits of the tree are poisoned." He said, "If that is in fact true, they determine the guilt of Colleen Mathis." He said, “If that is in fact true,” they determined the guilt of calling Mathis before they ever examined the evidence. Representative Kavanaugh doesn’t know if that is in fact true, and he said, “We should start over. What’s really poisoned about the process is it’s tainted by the fact that a commissioner cannot be independent without fear of being removed when a group of congressmen don’t like the lines that they draw. That’s what, that’s what’s poisoned about the fruit. That’s what’s tainted about this process. Your job, as defined by the law, was not to protect incumbents. You were, in fact, instructed to do quite the opposite, to disregard where the incumbents live, when, in addressing the other criteria of equal population, compactness, et cetera. Your job was to, to, to create districts that accurately reflect the interests of Arizona voters, and I’m just afraid at this point that you’re not really able to do that because of the political pressures. Professor Paul Bender said, he questions how any appointee can act truly independently given Mathis’s approval, uh, removal, and he said that the abrupt action to remove her and lack of detail about her alleged gross conduct creates a chilling effect. Well, I’d like to urge you to try to resist these political pressures.
Mr. Gallagher, would you please wrap up?
Yes, I’m wrapping up right now.
Right now.
And more than ever, you need to refuse to be intimidated by the powerful interests representing incumbent politicians, which this law was designed to take out of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, next up is Mark Grenna, followed by Dr. Janie Hydrick and Chase Williams.
Mark Grenard, M-A-R-K-G-R-E-N-A-R-D. I’m from District Three, and I have felt I’ve not been represented by my congressman in that district. I’ve made numerous calls to him, so I’m urging you to make all districts as competitive as possible, and I’m also urging you to keep those district, keep competitiveness as the number-one concern that I have, and I’m sorry that Colleen Mathis is not here to hear my opinions about the redistricting commission, and I commend you for your work.
Thank you. Dr. Janie Hydrick, Chase Williams, and C.G., CJ Brigle.
A lot of tall people tonight. Good evening, I’m Janie Hydrick, H-Y-D-R-I-C-K. Please note that the most vitriolic voices are neither the majority nor the ones which should deter you from the courageous path you, as a commission, have chosen to follow. Your perseverance alone could shepherd Arizona into a politically active future that can be fair, equitable, and truly reflective of its population. On Tuesday, twenty of my friends and I wrote separate and different letters to our LD senator. His answer to each of us was the same form letter. McCamish denied that Tuesday’s legislative travesty was a political power play. I have two PhDs, and I can tell you for certain that when the Republican Congressional delegation, the Republican governor, and every Republican member of the state legislature vote to deny the will of the people, that is a political power play. My legislative and congressional districts have been evolving. We no longer overwhelmingly reflect the unbending predictable ideology of a single party, so thank you for making the new CD-nine and LD-eighteen more competitive so they can truly reflect the increasing moderate character of our community. For the first time in many years, and for the first time in too many election cycles, we feel there is finally the opportunity to be represented rather than to be disenfranchised by the political system. However, there are a couple of tweaks that would render two adjoining legislative districts, LD-eighteen and LD-twenty-six, even more competitive. Baseline is the proposed divider between eighteen and twenty-six. By moving that divider north to Route sixty, and by pulling the eastern border back west to Dobson, both eighteen and twenty-six would be virtually fifty-fifty. With the current drafts, Chireen District essentially matches the boundary of LD-eighteen, and Tempe Union High School District fits right inside of CD-nine. The lifelong friendships and the intense community engagement that our four children garnered from their years in those two districts should be hallmarks of every community. With a truly competitive legislative district and congressional district, our community will finally have an opportunity to impact education policy and education funding. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Dr. Hydrick. Next up is Chase Williams, CJ Brigle, and Dorothy Ward.
Chase, C-H-A-S-E, Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
Sir?
Yep.
Go ahead and repeat it, please.
Chase, C-H-A-S-E, Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. I’m here speaking on behalf of my future, because if we continue to allow the Republicans in our state senate and allow our governor to continue her illegal power grab, we will never have competitive districts in the state of Arizona. For the next ten years, we have to deal with these districts, and if you allow these sitting congressmen to pick their districts so that they can run unopposed in a primary, I’m sorry Congressman Schweickert and Ben Quayle, it’s time you answer for the votes that you’ve made in the US Congress, and if that means you have to fight it out in the primary, then so be it. In fact, even Congressman Frank said today that it’s a politically awkward and unpopular move of what the governor did, especially because she’s in New York instead of being here in Arizona to answer to the citizens of this state. The three authors of Proposition 106 outlined today how they feel that her move was unconstitutional and not in line with the will of the voters. It’s time for our state to start working for the voters again, and stop working for the partisan politics that they have controlled for too long. We need to protect competitive districts, because it’s the only way that I or any of my generation will have a voice, and I’m tired of our older generations controlling my future, which is unfair and unjust. The bottom line of this commission and districts in general and the redistricting process is not everyone’s going to be happy all of the time. We’re never going to have 100 percent agreement. I’m not happy with all of the maps in the same way that my opponents, I guess, on the other side are not happy with all of the maps. But the bottom line is that’s part of the independent process. We’re not going to agree on every single issue, just as we don’t agree on every policy issue. The bottom line of this process is that we allow for the independence of this commission to exist. Chairwoman Mathis should be reinstated. Governor Brewer needs to apologize for her independent power grab and her illegal actions yesterday or this week in the senate, and Russell Pierce better be recalled next Tuesday, because we need new changes in this.
Next, next up is CJ Brigle, followed by Dorothy Ward and Toby Stahl.
CJ Brigle, B-R-I-G-G-L-E. And thank you, Commissioner. I do have a, I’ve been preempted with a special request to keep this open so that all of us can speak this evening, and I know you’re doing your best to do so. I’m personally satisfied that the maps are fair. As a matter of fact, for the first time, my new LD-eighteen and CD-nine are going to be competitive. That is going to be the first time my voice will be heard, and can be heard. However, the process has been disrupted. I’m an activist. As an activist, I am going to, on all future phone banks and canvassing, which I do often, I will remind those voters of a very popular Latin phrase, caveat emptor. And as a four-year student of Latin high school, by the way, I will interpret that for you, Colleen. Don’t let the bastards get you down.
Fire beware. Dorothy Ward, Toby Stahl, and Paula Limker.
My name is Dorothy Ward, D-O-R-O-T-H-Y-W-A-R-D, and I want, I want the district map that was proposed in the October tenth Arizona Republic to be adopted. I think it is a wonderful map with 710,000 people in each district, and hopefully the Native Americans being able to have a representative in Congress. There may need to be some tweaks here and there, but I think overall, it is an excellent map. I want to thank each of the commissioners for accepting your position, knowing what a contentious situation it would be. I want particularly to acknowledge the chairman’s position. I think she has done a superb job, and I think Governor Brewer is absolutely wrong in trying to get her ousted. She has done nothing wrong. I hope that she sleeps well at night, knowing that she’s been doing the right thing, because she certainly has. I think you should be commended.
Thank you very much. Next up is Toby Stahl, followed by Paula Limner and Mr. Charles McCracken.
My name is Toby Stahl, T-O-B-Y-S-T-A-H-L, and I’m here because I’m very angry and very upset. I’m upset with our elected officials who took the word “independent” out of this commission’s name. We voted for an independent commission, and that’s what we had until they decided that they didn’t like it, that Quayle and Schweickert might have to compete, so they colluded and got the governor to call the special session, although we all know she wasn’t here. But this is awful. You are stepping on our rights as citizens of this state to elect an independent commission and have it free of political interference, and that goes for you, too, Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you. I thank you for your work, as independent as it may be, because that’s what we need, and we also need competitive districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paula Limner, Mr. Charles McCracken, and Matt Mason.
My name is Paula Limker, Paula, P-A-U-L-A, Limker, L-I-N-K-E-R. I’m a citizen of Scottsdale, and I gotta put this back together. Thank you. Whoa. Okay, can you hear me, sir? Okay.
Kristen?
Okay, I got a little bit of the allergies, I’m sorry, impeding my voice, too. Okay, first of all, regarding the legislative districts here in Maricopa County, after several tries, the commission seems to have got it pretty much correct, although it would be nice to have South Scottsdale, where we reside right now, where we’re sitting right now, re-unified with the rest of Scottsdale. When I was outside, several people commented what a nice senior center this is. It is provided by Unified Scottsdale, and Scottsdale should be all one piece. Now, I’m really here tonight to address the sprawling CD-six. The congressional maps that have been drawn really don’t make a lot of sense. The last census showed population growth to the south of Maricopa County, and that’s where the new district should be formed. So, what does the commission do? But they draw up a map that already has dense districts, they split them up, they link them up with other existing congressional districts, totally disregarding clear communities of interest, and compactness and contiguousness. This is evidenced throughout the state, but particularly in proposed CD-six and CD-nine. Both seem to have been drawn without considering compactness and contiguousness and communities of interest. The proposed CD-six covers a large east-west swath, running from the 101 on the east over two highways and mountain ranges, picking up a lot of commercial areas and rambling around to try to pick up 710,000 in population. They ignore the communities of interest. If the 101 on the east could speak to the I-17 on the west, it might say something like, “My community worked hand-in-hand with the arts community and gave me nice amenities. It provided for nice soundproof decorations on the walls, showing the local flora and fauna, and it provided a nice bike and jogging path that was elevated for members of the community to utilize that weren’t taking their cars, and it also provides where the 101 crosses into the Salt River Pima Nation, a very lovely monument called the handshake.” Okay, I’m going to cut myself off right here, except that this is really a lot of gerrymandering here, and I do want to make one statement regardless of this. To the gentleman from Gilbert, I am Jewish, I was very insulted by his comparison of the actions of Der Fuhr to legally elected representatives in Arizona. I think he needs to get in touch with some history courses.
Thank you, ma’am.
I was two, and he was five.
Ma’am, if you have a written statement, please put it on the record with Ms. Gomez, right to your right. Next up is Charles McCracken, Matt Mason, and Jeanette Olivia.
Hi, Charles McCracken, M-C-C-R-A-C-K-E-N. Chuck. I, I’m a resident of Scottsdale and a native of our beloved Arizona, but I must report to you a tragedy to come. No representation. I’ll say it again, no representation. How would you feel if no one seemed to care? Or if no one listened to you? I did live in a gerrymandered current LD-fourteen. I’m a voting Republican, and no one there would listen to me. My side of the story couldn’t be told. My ideas to solve problems couldn’t be told, and my needs for my neighbors and neighborhoods could not be told. So, I had to make a real tough monumental decision, a decision to move away. So, now, South Scottsdale is my permanent home, and I love it. So, if the boundaries around South Scottsdale, there’s about sixteen precincts, are now projected into this new gerrymandered LD-twenty-four, and that map looks like a big U, I’ll be forced to endure no representation for a whole nother ten years all over again. You know, I live here in Scottsdale. I pay Scottsdale sales taxes, property taxes, I get my services from Scottsdale. I love it. But with these new boundaries, I would be common with north-central Phoenix, I would have something cylinder to do with West Indian School Road and Fifteenth Avenue, I’d be part and have things to do with downtown Phoenix. They’ve got nothing in common with my beautiful Papago Park, the zoo, or of course, those spring training games I’ll be getting to go to. So, don’t let these boundaries stay. Put me back into regular Scottsdale, the new twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Next up is Matt Mason, Janet, and Miles Egman.
Commissioner Matt Mason, M-A-T-T-M-A-S-O-N. I’m here on behalf of myself. I’m a third-generation Scottstalian, and I have two young children growing up here in Scottsdale, and I’d like to echo what Chuck said. This district, this District Twenty-four proposed, stretches from Nineteenth Avenue all the way to this location, and it’s just absolutely ridiculous. I don’t see how I’m supposed to, you know, when I look at a community of interest, do I take my kid to Nineteenth Avenue in northern for an ice cream cone, or do I take him over to Sugar Bowl downtown Scottsdale? It’s a, it’s a real obvious answer there, and these maps don’t address that. Instead, they seem to address the competitiveness issue alone. And what I’m seeing is that the natural boundaries like Scottsdale Road, the Scottsdale Unified School District, the city of Scottsdale is completely ignored. We instead cut off South Scottsdale from the rest, we use it as a bridge, and, and it just is grotesque. So, I really encourage you, I’ve got kids that are coming up, they’re going to be in the Scottsdale schools, I’d like a legislator that’s going to hear me when I’ve got issues. And, and I don’t think legislator that is representing a lot of Phoenix is going to care too much about a few residents in a little tucked-away spot of South Scottsdale. So, again, I’d like to urge the commission rethink LD-twenty-four and cut off that line. I’d appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Janet Olivier, or Oliver. Janet here? Nope, we’re going to go to Miles Egman. Miles is not here. We’re going to go to Mary Cozabom. Not here. We’re going to go to Kevin Jones.
I see you saved the best for last. My name is Kevin Jones, Jones, common spelling, Kevin, K-E-V-I-N, middle initial P for Patrick, the patron saint of Ireland. I must commend you, gentlemen, on the work that you have done in this redistricting endeavor, but I think it is all for naught. I refer you to today’s Arizona Republic. After Saturday, it’s unclear how the commission will proceed with its task of adjusting the draft maps. This in response to our faux-governor and Republican crybabies in the senate removing your chair. So, I don’t see how you can proceed because the political process has taken over your independence. I see this whole process going through the court system, I see the Republican meandering I see the Republican meandering attempts to be chided, and I think we're going to be back here again, two or three months from now, answering the same questions. So I guess I just was wondering why we're even having a meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next up is Kathy Snyder, followed by Janet Tillitson, and Bob Thomas. Followed by Judy Whitehouse. Judy Whitehouse will be followed by Allison Brevard and Kyle Blackhorse. Oh, Bob Thomas is here. So Bob will go first, or whoever hits the mic first just tell us who you are.
Commissioner, council, and members of the RC. I wanted to come and stay tonight to speak to the record. I've heard a lot of comments tonight about the new LD 24. I'm in that new LD 24, which was historically for the last 10 years part of the LD 15. I wanted to speak to the issue of communities of interest in that what does the historical neighborhoods of downtown Phoenix have in common with the east side of 101, the rural communities, and the Indian tribes? I was glad to hear those people speak earlier and want to be in a district that represents them and their interests and their rural farming interests. It has nothing in common with Encanto, Palmcroft, Willows, Coronada, any of their areas downtown. As you know, the LD 15 was a heavily gerrymandered district, with not Republican being elected in that district in the last 32 years. So I was glad to see South Scottsdale included in that. I would like to see the commission take the line of Camelback Road and extend it more west, I mean, more east, that would include the Arcadia neighborhood, which would be a neighborhood that would be a community of interest with the historical neighborhoods. The way that the numbers look on this district now, I know you're aware of it, but LD 24 will have 25.3% Republicans, 38.4% Democrats, and 31.4 independents. That's not competitive. It's the same 10 years of the gerrymandered district we've had. If you move the line from Camelback eastward and take in the Arcadia neighborhood, splitting it off from the Biltmore, you will have created a true competitive district that any of the three-party candidates could campaign and win in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next up is Judy Whitehouse, followed by Allison Brevard and Kyle Blackhorse.
Hi. Judy Whitehouse, J-U-D-Y-W-H-I-T-E-H-O-U-S-E. And I'm sorry that you're so light on commissioners tonight. But I think what I really want to say is for everyone, even those who are no longer here. I think this commission, particularly the ones who worked hard on getting the maps so that we had something to comment upon, we owe our thanks to them. Because if they hadn't acted, we wouldn't have anything to discuss right now. And those maps are given, that it's not final, they will be changed. But I hope that those who think that their interests and particularly their communities of interests are so exclusive to their school district, or their neighborhood, or their friends, that they have nothing in common with the rest of Arizonans, really need to get out more. And we need to break up those communities and have them find out that people really do have common interests. You're not so exclusive that you don't care about your children the way somebody else cares about their children, the way people in downtown Phoenix care about their children, care about the schools that their children attend. You're not so exclusive that you have to have a voting district where you can elect someone that is a member of your club rather than someone who might have some good ideas that you may not have heard of. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Allison Brevard. Allison Brevard, last call. Kyle Blackhorse.
Do you have a favor to ask?
Okay. Thank you very much. Maria Sims. Danica Oparnika. Very good. And after Danica, it will be Will Horwath and Bradley Vandemark.
Would you like me to spell my name?
Please.
And I am a nurse practitioner. I am here to speak on behalf of my patients, who in many cases cannot speak for themselves, but in all cases have suffered tremendously because of the last legislative redistricting map, which is not competitive and has allowed for repeatedly electing partisan legislatures who have relegated health care for the poor, for those on fixed incomes, for children, and for the mentally ill to the bottom of the heap. The current map, as it is drawn, in some part allows for competitive districts. More competitive districts would allow voters to elect a legislature that is more representative of our state's registration. There is nothing to fear for more competitive districts unless one desires a one-party system. In addition, I want to say that I'm very disturbed that the chair of this commission has been told, voted out, without the benefit of so much as a hearing, which, in my opinion, goes against everything this country stands for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Will Horwath. Bradley Vandemark.
My name is Bradley Vandemark, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y, Vandemark, V-A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K. The first commission set the precedent where the final maps were fundamentally different than the drafts. You folks, unfortunately, recently, we've had the legislature and governor say we don't like your drafts, and so I propose a solution. This spring/summer, there was a competition held by the Arizona Competitive District Coalition. I'm going to submit the results of the public mapping contest, in which it lists two winners for congressional maps, two winners for legislative maps, and honorable mention for each of those. All six of these options are better than your current drafts for meeting the Voting Rights Act, equal protection, compactness, communities of interest, geographical features, and competitive. It was an open competition. Nobody knew who submitted the maps: Democrat, Independent, Republicans. We didn't know. The judges selected based on the name of a Walt Disney character. And the winners were, for the Congress map, Sleepy, Aladdin, and the honorable mention was Mickey. For the legislative maps, the winners were Eeyore, Alice, and the honorable mention was Dewey. I suggest, as a commission, if the chairperson is not brought back, which I think she will because it's unconstitutional, it happened, hopefully the rest of you four, when I was here last time in South Mountain at the first meetings, I said I have no doubt about your integrity. I may disagree with each of your policies or positions, but I have no doubt you have great integrity. Without the commissioner, you folks, there's four of you, you only need three votes, take any one of these six and select one. If you can't agree, just agree to throw a dart and pick one. All six of these are better than your drafts, and absolutely better than anything the Republican legislature or governor will submit. I thank you very much, and I could say a lot more, but I don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Juan Mendez, Ed Hermes, and Susan Gerard.
I think Juan's not here.
Okay. So you must be Ed.
I'm Ed, yes. Thank you so much. I didn't think you guys would get to me, so I didn't really write a speech. But my name is Ed Hermes, E-D-H-E-R-M, as in Mary, E-S, as in Sam. I didn't vote for Prop 106. I wasn't able to vote yet. But when I learned about it in school, I was really proud of what our state had done. And when I became a government teacher myself, I was proud to teach my students about Prop 106 and about what it would do in terms of making it an independent redistricting commission. So when I read about this week, the governor's move to inject politics into your commission, I was really upset, and that's why I came down today. I haven't been following the process very closely, but I did send an email and tried to contact my senator to tell him, "Don't vote to remove Colleen Mathis." As always, didn't get a response. Because I think it's because my legislator's in a safe district. I live in Chandler, and he had no reason to respond. We have to get to the root of the problem. We need to create competitive districts in order to make all legislators listen to us and be responsive. And as a government teacher, I have to address the word "gerrymandering," because I think it's been used incorrectly a lot today. I think, hauled in my students and asked them what gerrymandering would is, I think they'd give you the right answer. And that's creating, artificially creating districts in order to favor one political party. And that's what gerrymandering is. So I ask you not to do that. And by creating competitive districts, you won't be doing gerrymandering. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Susan Gerard, followed by Frank Eugenti and Randall Holmes.
Hi. It's Susan Gerard, S-U-S-A-N-G-E-R-A-R-D. And boy, I would have not gotten to do this if we had to stop at 9 o'clock, so I appreciate the extra time. I'd just like to start by saying that...
(laughter)
Okay. I didn't talk that much. I just would like to start by saying I was actually a member of the state legislature the last time they did redistricting for themselves. And as ugly as the process is with the commission, it's still a whole lot better than the legislators doing it themselves, and I appreciate your work. I've already submitted a map for you. I'm only speaking to the draft of District 24 and 28 to try to make them a little better. 28 used to be 11. And what we've done here is make 28 more like it was. I know there were people here that didn't like South Scottsdale being in a certain district. This proposal moves them into 28. It moves Sunny Slope into 24, which actually adds to their amount of Hispanic voting age. But 24 will still be a coalition district, a minority-majority district, and will better comply with the Voting Rights Act. Both districts will be more compact and taken into consideration neighborhoods. We also, in this, have put most of the Scottsdale School District into 28 as well. We moved the Salt River Pimas and Fort McDowell tribes into 23. And then, to make it all balanced, there's minor changes to 20, 21, and 23 that I think, you know, deal with balance and splitting cities, so I think it makes them, enhances them as well. So they're going to be more compact. 28, I hope, will be more competitive. And I think they'll pass muster, not only with Prop 106, but also with the Voting Rights Act. My maps also include the block equivalents that you all put together, so it'd be easy for you to, you know, analyze them. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, we do have that on file, and we have it submitted. So thank you very much. Frank Eugenti. If I miss the pronunciations, I apologize.
Thank you. Frank Eugenti, F-R-A-N-K-U-G-E-N-T-I. I'd like to first speak on behalf of my wife, State Representative Michelle Eugenti, representing Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, and the Verde Communities, currently LD 8 and proposed LD 23. The proposed map is relatively good. It follows Scottsdale's city boundaries, Scottsdale Road to the west, all the way north to the county boundary. It does abandon South Scottsdale. I think that could be fixed. It also includes our sister city of Fountain Hills, which, in my opinion, must remain intact with Scottsdale. They're one and the same as far as community of interest are concerned. To Commissioner Councilman Littlefield's point, education, shopping, real estate, jobs, all things of community interest are, in fact, represented by the natural boundaries, and it almost perfectly represents the population requirements. I'd like to now speak on my own behalf and make it very clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of my wife's and her official capacity, as it relates to the congressional district. My job affords me the opportunity to understand all aspects of this state. I travel it in a real estate capacity. I know the markets. I know the communities. I know the people. You guys had to try real hard to screw up that congressional district, with all due respect. What happened to Fountain Hills is deliberate. It's a hatchet job, as well as what happened in northern Arizona. What happened in the central Phoenix, west Phoenix area, was scalpel-like precision of carving out Democratic congressional districts for current congressmen and some hopefuls coming out of our legislature in Democratic districts. I hope that can be remedied, especially as it relates to Fountain Hills. While I appreciate your efforts, I think you can do better, and thanks for your time.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next up is Randall Holmes, Jeff Scribner, Randy Keating, and Melanie Baikman. Hi.
You've all heard me talk on behalf of competitive districts in the past and on behalf of the independents of the commission. Something that was said by several people tonight really struck me: Doris Freeman, the gentleman who used to vote Republican in District 14, people who have been taxed for years but not represented. And, of course, I speak on behalf of the largest community of interest in Arizona, and that's the people of Arizona, the people who are taxed and most of them are not represented because they don't live in competitive districts. They live in a district that is safe, a safe district for one party or the other. And even if you are a member of the party who controls your district, you are still disenfranchised because your representative, your incumbent representative, takes your vote for granted. Since the turnout for primary elections is so low, it's confined to activists, pretty much, and ideologues, and they choose the most ideological member of that party who's running. And since it's a safe district, the general election is a foregone conclusion. It's a formality. So therefore, you are taxed and you are not representative, whether you're a blue person in a blue district or a red district, or whether you're a red person. And, of course, if you're an independent, they don't care about you at all. They don't care what you think. They don't care how you vote, because they don't need to compete for your vote. Now, the other communities of interest that we've heard from tonight, whether it's a city, a school board, an Indian First Americans community, their community of interest, there's this religion, they think their community of interest is best served if it's all in one district, so they can have more power over choosing one representative. The upshot of that is, of course, is that they only get one representative. And so I want to speak to the people who are not here tonight. They may not be watching on azredistricting.org. They may not be watching on angryhousewife.com, the people who don't pay attention to this stuff, but the people who wonder why their legislature doesn't do what they want it to do, and they get sidetracked into crazy stuff. The reason for that is because of uncompetitive districts and because you are disenfranchised. They don't care about your vote. They don't answer your letters. You are not important to them. What is important to them is who pays them, who pays for their campaigns, and who they have to raise money from, since that's what they spend all their time doing, is raising money from special interests. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next up is, and if we do this on time, we will get them all, Jeff Scribner.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Scriber. I represent myself and my small family, and I think many people that have already spoken today, but what they've said. I want to remind you what the reason for Prop 106, in fact, you know, with the little internet thing can actually read it, and what people voted on exactly was to oversee the, excuse me, oh, now I've hit it, but the balancing of fair and competitive districts. That's what people voted on. That's what the proposition was about. And you might say, "Well, why is that important?" Well, you've heard today from a number of sides, both on the left and on the right. Well, you heard today from a number of sides, both on the left and on the right, that they don't have representation. The reason they don't have representation is because when you have extremes on either side, that's the group that takes over. So, by having a competitive district, what you're going to allow yourself is to have a state where you can say, "Both major parties have to have people that are somewhere in the middle," because that's where the vast majority of people are. People are sick of the partisan bickering that we have on the left and the right, and by having moderates come on both sides, and that's only possible if you don't have a safe district, as someone just said, if you have a Republican district, they can be as far to the right and people don't get represented. If it's Democratic, it can be as far to the left. Most people are somewhere in the middle, that's where we should be, that's why it's important to do this. And finally, because you've got to take this away from the politician, that was the reason to do this, and what's just happened shows us exactly why to do this. The removal of your chair without any justification is criminal, and frankly, all of the commissioners, I believe, on both sides should repudiate this and make a clear statement that this is wrong, because this could have easily have been on the Democrats. In fact, my understanding is they tried to do that but weren't able to. If you get a different governor the next time, it could easily be on your side. This is not in anyone's interest. This was created to get a better interest for everyone. I think you guys are trying to do a good job at that. I'm not an expert on that, I don't want you to tell me how to do transplants, I'm not going to tell you how to do this, but I can tell you, it's time that you looked at independence and get people working together.
Good, thank you. Sir? Sir? Would you spell your name, please?
S-C-H-R-I-B-E-R.
Thank you. Next up, Randy Keating. And following that is our final speaker, which will be Melanie Baikman.
Hello, my name is Randy Keating, R-A-N-D-Y-K-E-A-T-I-N-G. And unfortunately, the gentleman earlier kind of stole my thunder. I wanted to point out that gerrymandering, as it's being used, is completely wrong, and that for a district to be competitive, it cannot be gerrymandered by definition, unless Marianne Webster's has a liberal bias, which I don't know if it does or not, but it could. So, I want to speak about competitiveness. What's so bad about competitiveness? Isn't competitiveness and competition what America is built on? We compete for everything in our daily lives. If competition makes a better widget, and competition makes a better athlete, then won't competition make a better public servant? And if two sitting congressmen are then forced to compete with each other, God forbid, for everyone's votes, how is that bad? Ultimately, the best man will win, and ultimately, Arizona will be better off for it. And then, that loser can go and run in some other race, if they really want to. And so, finally, I'll just say, you know, I'm a bit saddened. I'm relatively new into politics, and I'm definitely new into the level of activism that I have been into the past couple of years, and this whole process has really turned me off. I mean, I don't know about everyone else in this room, but I feel like maybe there's no saving us. Maybe we are just an ungovernable people, and no matter what, we're going to tear at each other's faces as our ship sinks. I think that when Arizona voters, in their wisdom, voted this commission into existence, they wanted fair and competitive districts. And we held up this system in high regard as the very model of what is best about our democracy. And instead, it has become a caricature of the worst of our democracy. And it's really turned me off. And I think this commission did itself a huge misservice when you allowed your unanimously-elected chairwoman to be tarred and feathered and attacked and slandered publicly, and you not one of you stood up and said, "Enough is enough, this woman is a woman of integrity, and she is serving the people to the best of her ability." Instead, we all stayed quiet, wink and a nod, and now look where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. And... (applause) You're sorry? You're sorry? Okay. Next, we have Melanie Baikman, and we do have one final speaker after Melanie.
Hello, thank you. My name is Melanie Baikman, M-E-L-A-N-I-E-B-E-I-K-M-A-N, and I'm here representing only First of all, as many have done, I'd like to thank you for your service. I know that it is a volunteer job. I understand that you have many important criteria to balance, and I will not minimize the importance of true communities of interest. But I do believe that competitive districts serve the majority of Arizonans, and specifically moderates of both parties and independents. Many prominent Arizonans have been trying to find, very publicly trying to find solutions to the extreme partisanship in Arizona politics, and Sandra Day O'Connor is one of those who've been looking for solutions to that. If moderates and independents had a vote, we wouldn't have the kind of abuse of power that we've had this week with our Arizona Senate, not to mention the governor and secretary of state. So, I believe that the events of this week are just one example of many of why we need more competitive districts in Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Because I do not have a speaker slip because we...
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
That's quite all right. Spell your name for the record, please.
Lauren Kuby, K-U-B-Y. So, the actions of Jan Brewer, the legislature, and the Republican Congressional delegation in the last few days bring to mind my favorite childhood story, Alice in Wonderland. So, imagine, if you will, ask everyone to suspend belief here, Alice is Chair Colleen Mathis. The Queen of Hearts is Jan Brewer, whose philosophy, like the queens, is sentence first and verdict afterwards. And off with her head, Jan Seiber proclaims, as she orders Chair Mathis fired from the IRC. The Mad Hatter is represented by the supermajority in the Senate, who's rushed a judgment, has oh-so hastily overturned the will of the voters. And who is the Cheshire Cat in this drama of democracy, this overdrawn drama of democracy? Well, it's Fair Trust Arizona, a super PAC funded by, as you know, Schweickert, Kyle, Gosar, and Quail, the Republican delegation. In Wonderland, all that is seen is the cat's grin, his corporal body is invisible, just like this shadowy group who's been influencing the independent redistricting commission...
Hold on.
Sorry. All that is seen is the cat's Cheshire grin, his corporal body is invisible, just like this shadowy group that's been influencing the independent redistricting process, is hiding from the voters. Curiouser and curiouser, only one thing is for sure, Arizona is down the rabbit hole.
Thank you very much. We now have Pat? Okay.
They ran out of time.
Please. And then, we'll have one more, which is, after you, will be Pam, I believe.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Laplaca, and I live in Tempe. I've lived in Arizona for a total of 25 years.
Spell your name for the record, please.
L-A, capital P, as in Peter, L-A-C-A. And I've been proud of the law that Arizona passed on the independent redistricting committee, and I'm very disappointed in Governor Brewer to just come in and, you know, off with her head, like Lauren said. And it's not good. It's really just reeks of politics, like lots of people say. We're a third, a third, a third, you know? We have a third independents who are really cut out of the process. And it's important because this is going to set our stage for 10 years. And so, I hope that Brewer and the Mad Hatters at the legislature will come to their senses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe I'm correct now in saying that Pam is our last speaker. Pam?
Thank you for indulging me. I serve on the town council for the town of Paradise Valley, and I am late arriving tonight as I've been in a council meeting since 1:00 PM this afternoon drafting our general plan, which is also very important, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I am proud to represent the residents, get their feedback on issues of importance to them, and stand up for their best interest. An undeniable connection for the residents of Paradise Valley is our strong connection to our neighboring communities in the city of Phoenix. These ties to the Biltmore to our west, northeast Phoenix to the north, and Arcadia to the south are extremely strong and have been for decades. There is great concern over the draft congressional maps and the way they split these very closely-linked communities apart. Specifically, the maps pull the Biltmore and Arcadia areas apart from their neighbors in Paradise Valley and northeast Phoenix, with the strong longstanding social and economic links they share in common. And they place them in a district with Tempe and other East Valley cities. The East Valley enjoys its own unique characteristics and needs, which are not shared in the Biltmore and Arcadia areas. I ask that you adjust the draft congressional map so that you don't split the Biltmore and Arcadia away from Paradise Valley and northeast Phoenix. We appreciate your hard work and the immense time commitment that you have devoted to this important process, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. I want to give special thanks to the city of Scottsdale for allowing us to use this beautiful facility this evening. I want to give special thanks to everybody that came out and hung out there, and above all, to the Iron Man, Marty, for being able to stand up to handle all of the public records without taking a break, allowing 100% of the public comments that wanted to be put on the record. The Iron Man, Marty. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.